Manana Sizuas, buenas, and Hafadei, todos Hamzu. This hybrid virtual and in-person hearing on Resolution Number 56-36 COR is called to order. The time now is eight o'clock AM. For the record, and in accordance with 5GCA Chapter 8, Subsection 8, 107, public hearing notices were sent on Wednesday, April 28, 2021, adhering to the five-day notice and a second public notice on Monday, May 3, 2021, 48 hours prior. Additionally, a courtesy notice initially sent out on April 8, 2021, to all senators and main media outlets. In addition, this hearing was noticed on the legislature's website, www.gwamlegislature.com. Written testimonies may be submitted by emailing Senator Munia Barnes at gwamlegislature.org, or you may hand-deliver it to our office at 163 Chalan Santo Papa, Hagatna, Guam, 96910. This hearing is being conducted by a hybrid meeting format, which allows those interested in testifying physically here in the public hearing room at the Guam Congress Building and testifying virtually via the Zoom Meeting Platform. To accommodate some of the conflicting schedules of those who have accepted my invitation to testify, I had allowed them to submit a pre-recorded testimony as well. I would like to thank the legislature's audio and video team for their assistance this morning. The host, ladies and gentlemen, will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by the chair. Once recognized, we have asked you to unmute yourself and speak clearly into your mic. Each senator will be allowed to pose questions to those testifying as needed after the panel. This included their presentation, given that I have the honor of welcome subject matter experts from all around the world to join us today. I hope my colleagues and those testifying can indulge me, and I allow those from different time zones to present their testimony first. In order to promote a more effective dialogue, I have grouped those who've signed up to testify into panels based on their background, and I will be calling them up in groups so that we can better facilitate the questions and answers in the end. The item on today's agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is Resolution Number 56-36 COR introduced by myself, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Senator Clinton E. Rigel, Senator Jose Turlahi, Senator Jose San Agustin, Senator James Moylan, and Senator Frank Blas Jr. I will also add that Senator Marion Torres has been invited to be a co-sponsor. An amendment will be made to that when this resolution gets on session four. And this, ladies and gentlemen, is relative to expressing the utmost support of House Resolution 279, acknowledging that the United States Supreme Court's decisions in the insular cases and the territorial incorporation doctrine are contrary to the text and history of the United States Constitution. Rest on racial views and stereotypes from the era of Plessy versus Ferguson that have long been rejected are contrary to our nation's most basic constitutional and democratic principles and should be rejected as having no place in the United States constitutional law. Joining me here this morning is my good colleague, Senator Mary Torres. I'd like to thank you for joining me here this morning, and thank you for understanding the importance of this discussion that we will be having and the implications the insular cases will continue to pose on our future generations. I will note for the record, colleagues, that this resolution was introduced by other colleagues, namely Senator Clinton, Senator Jose Pedro Turlahi, Senator James C. Moylan, and Senator Frank Blas Jr. I will note for the record, the conduct of this public hearing shall be as follows. Those testifying will be recognized in order of groups. For those on Zoom, we ask that each participant to broadcast from a quiet room with little to no interruptions, with adequate lighting specifically to ensure the participants' faces visible and not backlit. Virtual backgrounds should not be utilized during public hearings. Written testimonies may be read. In the interest of time, I ask testimonies to be summarized to no more than 10 minutes. Written testimonies shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide our legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Testimony shall be confined to only the substance of this resolution. Persons will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. Once you are done, you may be asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, as may be desired by members of the panel. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room and via Zoom. For the proceedings, individuals who do not comply may be escorted from the public room or removed from Zoom. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. I ask everyone here to keep your microphone audio off or muted until you are recognized. I'd like to say, please state your name for the record and where you're from, and if you support or do not support the resolution during your testimony. Those who do not follow these rules of engagement will be removed from this public hearing room. With that being said, I would like to briefly introduce my resolution. I introduce Resolution 56-36 COR, supporting Chairman Ra Gruvaha's House Resolution 279, which was co-sponsored by CNMI Representative Congressman Gregorio Sablon, Virgin Islands Representative Congresswoman Stacy Plaskett, Guam's Representative Congressman Michael San Niklas, Puerto Rico's Representative Congresswoman Jennifer Gonzalez Collet, New York's Representative Congresswoman Nadia Velazquez, Illinois's Representative Congressman Jesus Chui Garcia, and New York's Representative Congressman Richie Torres. Ladies and gentlemen, as a daughter of Guam, as the granddaughter of the late Colonel Juan Munia, who fought alongside United States Armed Forces and who Fort Juan Munia is named after, as the wife of an Air Force veteran, the mother and mother-in-law of an airman, and now the grandmother-in-law of a deployed soldier, my family's background and affiliation with the United States Armed Forces is just like many of our local families. Here on Guam, it is impossible for someone to not have friends and family who fight for the red, white, and blue, and the freedom and democracies that it represents. Guam is the home to the highest enlistment rate per capita into the United States Armed Forces. I can proudly say that we, as a people, are honored to do our part in promoting freedom, democracy, and keeping our country and the world safe. But at the same time, the citizens of the United States Territories are deprived from vital programs like the Supplemental Security Income, SSI, and the right to vote for our president. As we will hear today from those testifying, it is because of the precedent set by what is known as the insular cases, which was decided in the year 1901 by the United States Supreme Court. The insular cases states that the people of Guam are an uncivilized race, and therefore we are not deserving of fundamental rights. I cannot express how grateful I am of Chairman Gruvaha and his co-sponsors in Congress. They are taking a stand for the people of Guam and the territories, and I truly believe we cannot continue to sit back as our people continue to be treated as second-class citizens. I have always stated that I am a proud American, and part of being American is correcting the injustices of those who've come before us. Last year, colleagues, we joined the District of Columbia and worked closely with Senator Paul Strauss to become members of the UnPO, through my resolution last term, which granted Guam's membership into UNPO. The UNPO has released numerous publications outlining the injustices faced by the people of Guam. Most recently, the UNPO released a report titled "Chamoros Self-Determination, Development, Democracy, and Decolonization in Guam Admit a Military Build-Up." This report, which I will append into our committee report, outlines how the United States has violated international law and systematically refused to grant the people of Guam the right to manifest our destiny. While I personally am a proud American who favors a closer political relationship with the United States, I also support our people's right to self-determination, meaning the right to determine for ourselves what our future political status should be. At the end of the day, this is an issue for the people of Guam to decide. The month of May is Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, a celebration of Asians and Pacific Islanders in the United States. I hope today we can have a productive dialogue on what these insular cases mean and what its implications are for our island. I hope today will serve as the start to correcting the wrong of a century. I will be testifying before the House Committee on Natural Resources at a full committee legislative hearing on House Resolution 279 next week, and I hope that you can share your thoughts so that I can reflect the true opinion and perspective of our people of Guam. In closing, I look at my entire career as an athlete, an investigator, a director, and a senator for 15 years. I have lived a full life, blessed with great family, great friends, and a great career. For me, my goal now is to make sure that my children and our future generations are no longer subjected by these injustices, and with the partnership and support of all of you testifying today, I will keep fighting to meet my goal. And now, I would like to open this hearing to testimony, and if I may, we'll begin with the testimony submitted by Chairman Ra Gruvaha, the Chairman on the House Committee on Natural Resources and author of House Resolution 279.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Barnes, for scheduling this important hearing and for inviting me to participate in this discussion. I appreciate it very much. On March 26, myself, Representative San Nicolas, and six other members of the U.S. Congress introduced a bipartisan resolution rejecting the earliest 20th-century Supreme Court decisions known as the Insular Cases as racist and contrary to the U.S. Constitution. The Insular Cases belong to a very dark chapter of U.S. history, when doctrines of separate and unequal and attitudes about racial inferiority explicitly defined the country's laws and its relationship to the territories. We cannot erase this harmful past, but as legislators, we have an obligation to make sure its legacy does not extend into the future. The Insular Cases established an unequal legal and political relationship between the United States and its territories. Unfortunately, this legacy of inequality and neglect continues to be reinforced today with the exclusion of U.S. citizens living in the territories from voting in national elections and participating in critical federal benefit programs. Programs such as Supplemental Security Income and Medicaid provide essential resources for individuals and families living in the territories. However, as you well know, residents of territories like Guam are currently barred from assessing the complete benefit from these and other programs typically available to those living in the states, despite residents being otherwise eligible in every other way. In recent years, multiple federal courts have argued that denying U.S. citizens full and equal access to these resources simply because of where they live is unconstitutional. Similarly, the racism at the core of the Insular Cases is contrary to the text and the history of the Constitution. That is why this resolution also calls on the courts, the U.S. Department of Justice, and other litigants to make an effort of rejecting reliance on the Insular Cases present and in any other future case. Rejecting the Insular Cases sets an important precedent for challenging the continued discrimination against citizens in Guam and other territories in federal policy and within federal courts. The Insular Cases are a relic of the past with no modern relevance, and leaving the Insular Cases and its harmful legacy in the past opens a path towards fully realizing and affirming equal rights for Americans everywhere in the future. The Natural Resources Committee plans to host a hearing in May to discuss this resolution and move it forward. Thank you very much for prioritizing this resolution and lending your voices to this effort. Your constituents is demanded and needed, and I am proud to join with you in getting rid of this vestige that is not beneficial to your constituencies and not beneficial to the reputation, the ideals, and the values of the United States of America. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much, Chairman Gruvaha, for those remarks, and I look forward to testifying before you next week. I would also like to thank your staff, Director Brian Modesty, Deputy Director Margarita Varela Rosa, and Mr. Ivan Rogelis for their assistance. They will be accepting the committee report on this resolution, inclusive of the transcripts of all your testimonies to be appended to the Congressional Record for House Resolution 279. And before I introduce the next member, I'd like to recognize on Zoom with us our colleagues, Senator Jim Moylan, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Jose Pedro Turlahi. I also understand our speaker has joined us, Speaker Therese Turlahi, and also joining us here in the public hearing room is Senator Frank Blas. Thank you all, colleagues, for joining us here this morning. Next on our panel, colleagues and the listening audience, is Professor Rose Cuisson Villazor, and she teaches at Rutgers Law School. She writes about citizenship and migration as well as about the territories and is originally from the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands. She is the vice dean of the Professor of Law and Chancellor of Social Justice Scholar, as well as the Director of Center of Immigration Law of Policy and Justice. Thankfully, Professor Cuisson Villazor has graciously agreed to pop into this hearing before speaking at a previously scheduled event. I would like to thank you for your presence today and allow you to testify for Sizuas
Hafadei, and good morning. Sizuas Massey, my name is Rose Cruz Cuisson Villazor, and as noted, I am vice dean and professor of law at Rutgers Law School in New Jersey. Thank you, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, for inviting me to provide testimony on the Insular Cases and the Territorial Incorporation Doctrine. I am a legal scholar whose work has focused on immigration, citizenship, critical race theory, Asian-Americans and the law, and Pacific Islanders and the law. In my work on Pacific Islanders and the law, I have written about the Insular Cases, which have been published in the California Law Review, Fordham Law Review, Harvard Law Review Forum, and Southern California Law Review. On a personal level, I was born in the Philippines and grew up in the neighboring island of Saipan. I have been to Guam several times, as I have family and friends who are from there or live there. I therefore have a personal connection to Guam and the Northern Mariana Islands, and thus issues that affect the territories are of particular concern to me. Today, I offer my qualified support for Resolution 56-36 COR, which expresses support for the U.S. House of Representatives Resolution 279. As you know, HR 279 acknowledges, and here I quote, "that the United States Supreme Court's decisions in the Insular Cases and the territorial incorporation doctrine are contrary to the text and history of the U.S. Constitution, rest on racial views and stereotypes from the era of Plessy versus Ferguson that have long been rejected, are contrary to the nation's most basic constitutional principles, and should be rejected as having no place in U.S. constitutional law," end quote. There are three reasons why my support for Resolution 56-36 and indeed, HR 279, is qualified. First, I support denouncing the Insular Cases for their racist origins and racial subordination of people in the U.S. Territories. The words from the most well-known of the Insular Cases, Downs versus Fidwell, evidenced racism when Justice Brown wrote that the territories were, and I quote, "inhabited by alien races differing from us in religion, customs, and modes of thought," end quote, which made it impossible for the United States to govern them according to Anglo-Saxon principles. Another Supreme Court jurist, Justice White, referred to the millions of people in the U.S. Territories as uncivilized and unfit for citizenship. In light of the country's current reckoning with structural racism, it is important to acknowledge how these racist and hurtful words were constructed people in the territories as racialized and inferior people and rendered the territories a second-class citizens. Second, I recognize that the Insular Cases have led to unequal application of U.S. constitutional principles in the U.S. Territories and must therefore be denounced for doing so. These cases have had negative impact, as has been mentioned, on U.S. territories, including the Philippines when it was then a U.S. territory. Understanding and amplifying this unknown history is crucial for recognizing the unique harms that people in the U.S. Territories have experienced since the 1900s, and that these harms are ongoing. For example, in multiple cases in which Filipinos argued that they were entitled to birthright citizenship because they were born in the Philippines, when the islands were then subject to U.S. jurisdiction, several appellate courts relied on the Insular Cases to hold that the citizenship clause did not apply in the Philippines. The non-recognition of citizenship had concrete and negative consequences, including deportation of Filipinos from the United States and inability to pass down citizenship to family members. Having said the above, and I want to be clear, I condemn the Insular Cases for their racist origins, I do want to explain a third point, which addresses why my support for Resolution 56-36 is qualified. Despite the racist origins of the Insular Cases, it is important to also recognize that these cases may be seen in a different light when viewed from at least the point of view of some indigenous peoples, such as those from the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands. In Walvo versus Villa Cruzes, the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit relied on the Insular Cases to uphold the CNMI's law that restricted land ownership to persons who were at least 25% Northern Marianas descent. As the Ninth Circuit recognized, the political agreement between the United States and the CNMI would not have been achieved if not for the assurance of the United States that land ownership would be protected. Had the Ninth Circuit not had the Insular Cases to rely on, it would have likely had to use traditional equal protection law to examine the validity of the restrictive land alienation law. Under then-equal-protection jurisprudence, as it is now, the law in the CNMI would have been subject to equal protection analysis under its most strictest form, strict scrutiny, and notably, under equal protection, strict scrutiny, the law in the CNMI would likely have been struck down. In the interest of time, I will submit to you two articles in which I explain further. Some of them are complex perspectives that I have with respect to the Insular Cases doctrine and the territorial incorporation doctrine. I want to be clear again that the Insular Cases should be condemned. However, the ways in which the Insular Cases have some redemptive value should be explored by those who are currently engaged in the discussion of what the Insular Cases mean to us today. Thank you for the opportunity and the honor of sharing my views with you. Undangkulu na Sizuas Maase.
Undangkulu na Sizuas Maase, Professor Cuisson Villazor. I look forward to speaking with you at Chairman Gruvaha's upcoming hearing for House Resolution 279. And before we let you go, I'm going to go ahead and ask my colleagues, does anyone have any question or comment for Professor Cuisson Villazor? I do know that this is a two-step process, so I'm going to go ahead and acknowledge my colleagues who are here physically in the public hearing room, so I will yield to if Senator Torres has a comment or a question for the professor, please, at this time.
Professor Villazor, good morning. This is Mary Torres. I just want to ask you if you could indeed provide some articles, because I'm very interested in learning about the redemptive value of these Insular Cases in certain circumstances, just to have a broad understanding of all the implications of the Insular Cases, bad and perhaps where there might be some value to the indigenous people. But thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you too, and I'd be happy to submit those articles to you.
Senator Frank Blas? Speaker Turlahi, or anyone in the Zoom at this time? I will recognize you, Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Professor. Glad that you pointed out what you did in your testimony. I just wanted to ask if you think that if the Insular, well, if Congress, if this resolution passes and the resolution in Congress passes, what effect that might have? And also, if these Insular Cases were deemed not valid, then what would, would Congress still be able to afford the CNMI that type of a relationship? I know you said the analysis and the case might be different, but would Congress be able to afford them that type of a relationship?
With respect to your first question about whether, what impact the congressional resolution would have in the courts, a resolution signals a strong statement from Congress that these cases should be abandoned, but they're not legally binding on the courts themselves. Both courts can use the resolution as persuasive value. With respect to what Congress can do, one of the suggestions I will make and expand upon next week, when I testify before the Natural Resources Committee, is a legislative, a possible legislative fix that would recognize people within the CNMI and other indigenous peoples in the five territories, for them to be recognized as a political group. Once an indigenous group is recognized as some kind of a federally recognized tribe or federally recognized indigenous group, then they gain some protection in the same ways that federally recognized American Indian tribes are recognized. If that were to happen, then some of the cases that I discuss in my paper, in my articles with respect to current equal protection law that would treat right now indigenous peoples' Chamoros, Carolinians, and other indigenous groups in the territories, currently they would be viewed from a race, they will be classified as racialized groups, and so therefore subject to a higher standard of scrutiny. and so therefore, subject to a higher standard of scrutiny. But if they are classified as a political groups, then arguably, equal protection law could treat them differently. And so if through that legislative fix, a possible legislative resolution, courts will no longer need to rely on the insular cases. The territory, people in the U.S. territories will then be included within traditional equal protection law. But then there's some kind of a legislative resolution for some of the legal claims that indigenous peoples have in the territories.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Professor.
Thank you, Speaker Chalai.
Are there any other colleagues?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question, a couple of questions.
Senator Duñez, thank you so much for joining us this morning again. You may proceed.
Yes, Professor, I, my first question would be, and I'm interested that you had a qualified testimony, and I think it's appropriate. You mentioned the CNMI, but are you aware also on Guam's status as an unincorporated territory? And how that formation came to be alongside the insular cases? Would you then see that if Guam was an incorporated territory, the possibilities of the loss of a lot of its tax policies, which Downs and Fidwell sought to remedy? And you understand, does your qualification also extend to Guam and the potential pitfalls that may exist as well?
I think Guam's history is different from CNMI's history. And what I would point to is the CNMI was able to negotiate the terms of their political status with the CNMI that Guamanians did not have the ability to do. And so the perspective that I share with respect to the insular cases does stem from my view as someone from the CNMI, who believes that the insular cases has had some redemptive benevolent value for the CNMI. I agree with you, Senator Duñez, that with, from the Guamanian's perspective and arguably, other, the perspectives of other U.S. territories, the fraught history of colonization of Guam and Puerto Rico and others make it difficult to agree to the ongoing use of the insular cases doctrine because of the unequal ways in which the territory, territorial peoples or the people in those territories have been treated under the law.
Sure. So Professor, I mean, I understand your perspective with regard to that and the discussion about self-determination. However, when we use it as a basis in law and what actually gave us the current structure we have, I would argue that an incorporated territory would be much more devastating to Guam than the current unincorporated territory status that we have. I also draw to your issue there of the work to designate Guam and tribal status. So I guess my question to you would be, would that be a constitutional amendment based on how the tribes were established? And the origin of that establishment? What mechanism in law in Congress would allow for that outside of the designation that I believe is a constitutional designation? I may be wrong on that, but I stand to be corrected.
I'm not sure, sir, if it's a constitutional, if a constitutional amendment is, I don't think actually the constitutional amendment is necessary. The Department of Interior has issued regulations that provide for ways in which an American Indian tribe can gain federal recognition as a federally recognized tribe using various criteria. Unfortunately, the criteria right now specifically includes only those tribes that are located in the 48 contiguous states and Alaska. So by definition, under the current Department of Interior regulations, people from Hawaii and none of the indigenous peoples in the territories can even qualify for those, under those criteria. That's the part that I'm hoping to suggest could be used as a possible resolution. The resolution, the legislative resolution I am proposing is not new. Senator Akaka had for years tried to gain political recognition for Native Hawaiians. We can build on that for some of the indigenous peoples in the U.S. territories.
So my final question then would be that you discussed the possible pitfalls because the resolution essentially makes a statement. But if other lawmakers view it in a different way, you're, so just to be clear, your desire to see that Guam could possibly be included in tribal status, you seem to have asserted that that would be some sort of protection other than some assertion. Because it seems to me what you're trying to say here, especially on the critical race theory angle, is that it is the language that identifies the peoples on the insular cases as being offensive on the alien status. But you don't, you qualify your statement for the CNMI based on possible benefits and redeeming factors, such as Guam as well. So just wanted to be clear once again. In the event that this resolution was viewed by opposition members of Congress and the United States government as more substantive, that was your take on how to protect from that possible pushback?
Thank you, Minority Leader Duñez. I will, I will see, Professor would like to comment to that before we move on to the next panel. But thank you, Minority Leader.
Just to quickly respond to Senator Duñez's point, I mean, I think we, if we had more time, I would be happy to expand further on some of the nuances of the resolution and the legal implications it might have. I'd like to just end by saying that the five U.S. territories have unique histories, unique needs. There are, there is no consistency with respect to, or there's no uniformity with respect to support for the insular cases doctrine, the territorial incorporation doctrine. And I think the lack of uniform support for the insular cases is something that ought to be recognized and examined further because due to the fact that the five U.S. territories have different histories and origins and how they became part of the United States. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Professor, for your testimony this morning again, and we truly appreciate your presentation here this morning. Before we go on to the next panel, is there any other colleague on the House? I will recognize Senator Tony Adah, who's also joined us on Zoom and former Senator Dr. Kelly Marsh Titino Manana Sizos. Thank you for joining us here this morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Colleagues, next on our panel will be the Honorable Senator Paul Strauss. Senator Strauss is a shadow senator representing Washington, D.C. in the United States Senate. Senator Strauss was instrumental in helping our efforts in joining the UNPO. And just like we did last term, I had introduced a resolution supporting D.C.'s statehood, and I will be introducing another one this week as well. Senator, it is my pleasure to have you here again this morning and always appreciate our friendship and collaboration. You may begin your testimony.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Speaker, and to the distinguished senators and members of the legislature and my fellow Americans of Guam. I am pleased to present testimony today in support of your resolution, which supports House Resolution 279, which will, we hope, express the overdue opinion that the racist ideology expressed in the insular cases is an idea that belongs on the dustbin of history along with so many other terrible racist ideas, be it slavery, racial segregation, Jim Crow laws, fascism, and the types of discrimination on the basis of religion and other ideologies that no longer deserve a place in 21st century civilized society. The future of Guam is a decision that should be made by the citizens of Guam. But as a senator from the District of Columbia, from Washington, D.C., we stand in solidarity with other unrepresented Americans. There are some differences in our status, to be sure. We get to elect a president, or at least electors in the Electoral College. You do not. We pay full federal taxes. Guam does not. And we can't even begin to match the patriotism of Guam citizens when it comes to serving in our military and wearing the proud uniform of our country. But most Washington, D.C. residents, whether they serve in the military, whether they serve in civilian government, like my now-famous constituent, Dr. Anthony Fauci, or whether they simply live their lives having nothing to do with the federal government, which is the majority of Washington, D.C. residents, all deserve to participate equally in our society. Like Guam, Washington, D.C. residents have no voting representation in Congress. And yet, we have continued to elect non-voting members in addition to a delegate as a way of expressing our continued desire for self-determination, which we have made the decision to achieve in the form of joining the Union as we hope the 51st state. The idea that it is still good case law to have any American classified as an alien race, not appropriately governable because they don't embody Anglo-Saxon principles, should shock the conscience and offend all of us. At the time, the insular cases were decided. Segregation was the law of the land. And my family, a Slavic family, hardly embodying any kind of Anglo-Saxon anything, was up in Eastern Europe battling an oppressive force. They chose to come to the United States to seek freedom because they believed in the principles that our nation was founded on, that it wasn't about anybody's race, that it wasn't about anybody's religion, that the United States was about an ethos. It was about a value system. It was about a creed. And it meant that wherever you were from, that whatever your religion, whatever your race, you had the right to become an American. And the only test was whether you shared our values as an American. For the Chamorro people, the United States came to you involuntarily. And yet, your values are very much consistent with our ideals. And so, it's not my place to tell anybody on Guam how to exercise their self-determination. But I would certainly hope that you would consider those steps that would allow you to be better represented and more dramatically and equally represented in our own Congress. Because our democracy works best when all voices are heard. Just like an orchestra that refuses to let the violins be heard isn't punishing the string section, but diminishing the quality of symphonic music, when every American, regardless of where on the planet you live, regardless of your ethnicity, regardless of your race, and regardless of whether your ancestry was Anglo-Saxon in origin, if any one of us voices are silenced, it diminishes the quality of the music of our democracy overall. The United States Congress, and in the Senate in particular, would benefit from the kind the island to the brave men and women who were serving on the Theodore Roosevelt. We appreciate your service to our country. All Americans deserve political equality. All Americans deserve self-determination. And we're proud to support this resolution and stand with you in solidarity, not to dictate a pathway forward for the people of Guam, but to support whatever path you choose and end discrimination against American colonies. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Undankaluna seduz maase, Senator Strauss. Again, we are grateful for your friendship and support, and I hope that, Senator Strauss, you can continue to stay on to the end of the panel so we can allow our colleagues for some questions and answers. Also, before I move on, I'd like to welcome Senator Joanne Brown, who's also joining us via Zoom. And I will note, based on the inquiry by the minority leader earlier, that based on the chairman's staff, there has been information sent to us that there is no constitutional amendment needed, just new federal law. So colleagues and to the listening audience, the next on our panel is the Honorable Senator Michael Brown. Michael, Senator Brown is also a shadow senator representing the people of Washington, D.C. Senator, it is nice to meet you. And just like your colleague, I look forward to building on this relationship. And you may begin your testimony at this time.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. I so much appreciate your invitation to speak today. I'm certainly not an expert on the situation that Guam finds itself in. And I wouldn't presume to give you my opinion on, in the midst of so many legal experts, on what the next move for the people of Guam is in trying to seek equality as American citizens. I'm proud to be here with my colleague, Senator Strauss. I too am a member of UNPO. We are members of UNPO. I was proud to be standing next to him in Edinburgh, Scotland, a few years ago as we signed on to the Unrepresented Nations and Peoples Organization. I'm here to support the people of Guam. I've read House Resolution 279. I am at least vaguely familiar with the court decisions around the insular cases. And I would like to point out that many of the things that the people of Guam have to deal with are similar to the situation that the District of Columbia finds itself in. As Senator Strauss has already pointed out, the insular cases were decided during a period of segregation and racism in America. And likewise, 100 years earlier in 1801, an organic act was passed controlling the District of Columbia 60 years before the end of slavery. So we were, we were both, in a sense, born out of the same racist and parochial attitudes that existed at the time. Now, Washingtonians, it's true, lack representation in Congress and ultimate control over their local government, although we do have the advantages of full protection, the full protections of citizenship under the Constitution. The insular cases, which separated the territories into different classes, have led to a situation, obviously, in the territories, which is no longer acceptable. One of the great, great strengths of democracy One of the great, great strengths of democracy is our ability to change. As we recognize here in the District of Columbia that things have changed since 1801, congressmen also recognize that things have changed since the early 1900s. We've had two world wars. Guam has been a great ally, and I feel the same angst that the vice chairman feels. I come from a military family like the people of Guam, the people of District Columbia, served at higher than their national average, and it's time that we end the racism which has led to the separation of American citizens, not only in the 48 contiguous states or the 50 states, but all across the globe. I've had the honor of serving at the past 11 Democratic nominating conventions and have had the pleasure of meeting many, many people from Guam. They pretty much set, you know, they sit the District of Columbia and Guam up in the rafters next to each other. So I've been lucky enough to meet many, many great people from your territory. And that really is the crux of the issue, is that we've decided in the District of Columbia in 1953, in the monumental Supreme Court case, that there is no equality in being separate. Brown versus Board of Education established the principle that separate but equal cannot exist. So I hope that the people of Guam, in their struggle to be equal citizens, will someday be fully vested citizens in the United States, as we attempt to do with statehood. Whatever your path is, I just want you to know that I'm here to support you, and I'm happy to take questions, and I will stay. And, you know, if you have any questions about what we're doing here in the District of Columbia. And I'd like to remind everybody that's listening what Dr. King taught us, that the arc of the moral universe bends towards justice. But how quickly it bends depends on how many of us are willing to stand up together and temper it. So I'm here to stand with you. I fully support Resolution 56-36, which is in support of House Resolution 279, and I hope that you will count on me as a resource, as you obviously have done with my distinguished colleague, Senator Strauss. And I would like to thank you, Madam Vice Speaker, for not only inviting me, but for putting in yet another resolution in support of our struggle. Thank you.
Undankalunasizusmasi, Senator Brown. Colleagues, the next on our panel is the Honorable Secretary General Rav Bunch. Secretary General Bunch is the Secretary General of the Unrepresented Nations and Peoples Organization. Secretary Bunch has been instrumental in putting together literature to document the injustices faced by the people of Guam, and through his advocacy, we had the Special Rapporteur report by the United Nations. Mr. Secretary General, always a pleasure to welcome you. Hafaday, and you may begin your presentation at this time.
Hafaday, thank you, Madam Speaker, Madam Vice Speaker. I'd like to sincerely thank you for the invitation to testify today and for all of your efforts on behalf of the federally disenfranchised citizens of Guam and the right to self-determination of the indigenous Chamorro people. I'm pleased to provide the UNPO's unqualified support for House Resolution, well, for Resolution 56-36. Unqualified because, and with all due respect to the professor who originally spoke, the insular cases stand in absolutely stark violation of the United States' international commitments to end colonialism. These are international obligations that the United States was instrumental in creating during the post-war efforts to end empire and enforcing all around the world. They have no place in US law, irrespective of whether or not they have some ancillary benefits to some people. They must be overturned, and overturned in such a way, again, with due respect to the professor, as to allow the people of the territories and not the US Congress to decide on their future through amendments. The people need to be able to decide. The Unrepresented Nations and Peoples Organization is an international organization dedicated to the full realization of the right to self-determination worldwide. Our members include the governments of Guam and the District of Columbia. Our work is guided by the maxim, and it's very popular here in Brussels, where I'm speaking to you from, you'll see how dark it is outside, that if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And that's a fundamental truth that's unfortunately too apparent to all of the peoples represented in our organization. It's apparent whether they are the people represented by the government of Somaliland, surrounded on all sides by war and poverty, the people of Tibetan government in exile, continually occupied by an authoritarian government intent on suppressing all indigenous populations, who, by the way, I would add, get succor and support, frankly, from the insular cases and the continuation of colonial policy in the United States, or to the people in wealthy and free countries represented by the governments of Taiwan, the governments of Guam, and the District of Columbia, all peoples that we are very proud to have as members within the UNPO. Irrespective of whether you're in an occupied territory, or in a rich country, or in a war-torn country, the harm suffered by UNPO member peoples can all equally be correlated with their occupation, the colonization, or their exclusion from the systems of national and international governance. As you rightly said, Madam Vice Speaker, we published a report on the 26th of April on Chamorro self-determination. It can be accessed on our website at unpo.org. It contains our analysis of the rights of the indigenous people of Guam and a compendium of our most recent efforts to raise international awareness of the situation in the territories and in the District of Columbia, which is quite wide-ranging, the work that we've been doing in this regard. I encourage everybody to read it. It contains a wealth of information, also a succinct analysis of the impact of the current system that's caused by the insular cases. The report also contains the very powerful words of the three UN experts that you alluded to, Madam Vice Speaker, in their letter of allegation sent to the US government regarding the rights violations for the Chamorro people. To quote the Special Rapporteurs, they say, "The Chamorro people have not been provided their free prior and informed consent in connection with the ongoing expansion of US military bases and its occupying increase, accompanying increase in personnel on Guam. The military escalation risks increased contamination to the drink water, loss of life and biodiversity, irreversible damage to the traditional livelihoods, territories, and resources, loss of traditional livelihoods, cultural sites and heritage, and threatens the physical and cultural survival of the Chamorro." We are also, according to the UN Special Rapporteurs, "extremely concerned over the impacts of the life and health of the Chamorro people due to potential and existing risks posed to their health and well-being resulting from toxic pollutants surrounding them and the lack of food and water security, also due to alarming levels of toxic pollution present in their environment." Just one part of the letter of allegation sent to the United States, all of which grounded on a violation of the right to self-determination of the Chamorro people, all of which grounded, I would argue, by the continuation of the doctrine that's contained in the insular cases. And I think this letter is significant, not only because of the recognition of the violation of the rights of the Chamorro people, but also as a reminder that the issues that in the United States are all too often considered political matters to be decided between the political parties, such as the status of the District of Columbia, or the status of Guam and other US territories. Those political matters must instead be understood as human rights matters, as violations of the laws that the US agreed to be bound by when it helped found the United Nations, laws that the US tried to create for the world. I think this is critically important to remember, and that letter reminds us of that. Also in our report, and in the work that we've been doing, are some very powerful words from a former member of this House, the Chamorro signer, Hope Christobal, on whose behalf we recently filed a case before the Inter-American Commission on Human Rights related to the denial of the referendum in Guam by the US courts in the cases of Davis versus Guam, which in effect establish an unequal, fully and everlasting unequal rights for the Chamorro people, who are actually guaranteed a right to a referendum at some point under international law governing non-self-governing territories. Anyway, I'll leave you with Auntie Hope's words. Auntie Hope is she's known to many of the young protectors of the Chamorro people. A few of the things that she said, because I think they highlight the dangers of the insular cases. Talking of her early years and education, she recalls, and this is her quote, "The American school system set up within the newly created local governments of Guam aimed to deprive, deny, and dispossess me and all schoolchildren from our identity as Chamoros. We were not allowed to speak our native tongue. We were physically punished for speaking Chamorro on school grounds, and we were demerited academically, these among other maltreatments at the elementary and middle school years." Discussing the impact of the federal presence in Guam to this day, she says, "Two-thirds of our land seized were prime agricultural lands and coastlines and reef systems that sustained my people. Many families can only look from outside the military fences to enjoy family lands." With those large families today are denied their livelihoods without their lands. And finally, recalling the rapid tourism development on Guam, she says, and her campaigning against them, she says, "We held up signs to prevent the desecration and destruction of our ancestral burial grounds. This went on for over two decades. The rush to beat contractors to burial sites, to prevent desecration and the re-consecration and to appease the spirits of our ancestors that we believe reside in their peaceful resting place, but suffer from being defiled, dug up, and displaced. Local laws were unable to protect our people's remains. Today, we continue vigilance for our ancestral burials at all construction sites as we demand policy that respects. But many of our elders who paced these recent paths of resistance are themselves at peace today." I think Auntie Hope's really powerful words clearly demonstrates that the situation that's faced by the territories, and frankly, by all peoples who are denied equal representation in the systems of governance in the United States, that has gone on for far too long, and that quite frankly, the insular cases have no support, whether they have some ancillary benefit for some people, in a free and democratic United States today, and one that claims to adhere to international law. So thank you. We urge this House to adopt this resolution, and we provide our very much unqualified
Undankalunasizusmasi, Secretary General Bunch. Colleagues, the next on our panel is the Honorable Senate President Juju Hofschneider from the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands. Hafaday, Senate President, thank you for joining us here today. Senate President Hofschneider has previously served as the Ninth Lieutenant Governor of the CNMI. I have seen firsthand his commitment to our Mariana Islands and our people. Mr. Senate President Sizusmasi, for always answering my calls and standing side by side to get work done for our people. If I may at this time ask Senator Torres, could you please read his testimony?
Surely, Madam Vice Speaker. Good morning, Vice Speaker Barnes and members of Imena Trentaisas na Ilheh Sichurangwahan. Thank you for the invitation to testify at a public hearing supporting US Congress House Resolution 279 through the introduction of Guam Resolution Number 56-36COR. I submit this written testimony wholeheartedly supporting House Resolution 279 and Guam Resolution Number 56-36COR. Resolution Number 56-36COR is entitled, "Relative to expressing the utmost support of House Resolution 279, acknowledging that the United States Supreme Court's decisions in the insular cases and the territorial incorporation doctrine are contrary to the text and history of the United States Constitution, rest on racial views and stereotypes from the era of Plessy v. Ferguson that have long been rejected, are contrary to our nation's most basic constitutional and democratic principles, and should be rejected as having no place in the United States constitutional law. I stand by my brothers and sisters in Guam and all the other territories in support of Resolution 279 and Guam Resolution 56-36COR. Now is the time to end the injustice faced by all American citizens and nationals residing in the territories through the application of the territorial incorporation doctrine established by the insular cases, which means that territories that were not incorporated into the US, known as unincorporated territories, do not enjoy the full rights of the US Constitution, Guam, the CNMI, Puerto Rico, American Samoa, and the US Virgin Islands. Remain unincorporated territories of the USA today. The American citizens and nationals residing in Guam, the CNMI, Puerto Rico, American Samoa, and the US Virgin Islands, while they can serve in the US military, cannot vote for the president, are not represented in Congress by a voting member, do not have full constitutional rights, and have federal laws disparately applied to them. Specifically, Guam has been colonized since 1898, and the people have endured more than 120 years of injustice. Rather than giving the inhabitants of Guam, the Chamorro people, the right to choose their political status, Guam was placed under the jurisdiction of the US Navy until 1950, when Congress passed the Organic Act of Guam. Rather than granting the Chamorro people the fundamental right to establish their own constitution and self-governance, the Organic Act of Guam granted Guam residents birthright citizenship and established a Bill of Rights while providing for a civil government led by governor appointed by the US president. In 1968, US Congress finally voted to allow Guam residents to elect their own governor, 70 years after Guam was acquired. And in 1972, they provided for the island to be represented by a non-voting delegate in the US Congress, 74 years after Guam was acquired. Today, more than 120 years after it was acquired, Guam and its American residents continue to be denied the same rights and benefits as Americans residing in the 50 states. The insular cases, the US Supreme Court, the US Congress, and the federal government have also used national defense to justify their unilateral actions in the Marianas, which includes the CNMI in Guam. The CNMI, like Guam, has been used by the military for strategic military purposes in the Pacific region. Two-thirds of the island of Tinian in the CNMI has been leased and occupied by the US military since 1978. Additionally, the entire island of Farallon de Medelina in the CNMI was also leased at a very low price for military target practice. Today, the entire island is destroyed, and the surrounding waters hazardous, yet the US military has not offered any just compensation or mitigation for the damage sustained at Farallon de Medenila. In the CNMI, the US courts and the Congress unilaterally took our 12-mile territorial waters and returned back three miles surrounding the CNMI, except for certain waters surrounding the two-thirds military land in Tinian. How can the CNMI lose territorial waters that it owned before the 1978 and did not consent to be taken by the federal government? The US president also unilaterally declared an area of approximately 95,216 square miles, or 246,608 square kilometers, of submerged lands and water in the CNMI as the Marianas Trench Marine National Monument. The marine monument includes Iuricas, Mog, and Assuncheon, the three northernmost commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands. Despite the opposition from the CNMI government and the people, and instance that these three CNMI islands were already protected in our Northern Marianas Constitution, the federal government took them anyway. The Marianas Trench Marine National Monument prohibits any recreational or cultural activities, including traditional and cultural fishing, within the marine monument without permission. Again, these lands, territorial waters, and natural resources... Again, these lands, territorial waters, and natural resources were unilaterally taken from the CNMI without the consent of the government and the people. The insular cases and the territorial incorporation doctrine has not only denied the American citizens residing in these territories full constitutional rights, including voting rights, the right to be represented in Congress, and equal distribution of federal benefits programs. The insular cases gave Congress and the federal government the power to take without consent and just compensation from the unincorporated territories. Now is the time to end the injustice and denial of constitutional rights and the unlawful taking of land, submerged lands, water, and resources of the territories, especially Guam and the CNMI. Based on the foregoing reasons, I wholeheartedly join my brothers and sisters in Guam in support of House Resolution 279 and Guam Resolution 56-36COR. The insular cases and the territorial incorporation doctrine must be overturned and constitutional law be restored. Together, let's take back our islands and determine the futures of our governments and people of the Marianas. Sizus Mossi, Vice Speaker, that was the testimony by Senate President Jude U. Hofschneider.
Sizus Mossi, Senators, for presenting that on behalf of Senate President Hofschneider. The next on our panel, colleagues, is former Congressman Dr. Robert A. Underwood. Congressman Underwood is Guam's former delegate to the United States House of Representatives and former president of the University of Guam. Congressman Underwood is a renowned scholar when it comes to the territorial issues and self-determination. Anyone who wants to do research on these topics, you will be sure to find countless scholarly articles written by Congressman Underwood. Sizus Mossi, Congressman, for you're always fighting the good fight for our people of Guam. You may begin your testimony at this time.
Buenas dias, todos hamzu, membro ni mina Trentaisas na ilehesa churanguahan. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you and to all our guests from other parts of the planet. I don't have prepared testimony, and I just wanted to say that this is, the testimony that has been given up to this point reveals a number of federal misdeeds, a number of complaints about the federal government, and also conveys a sense that we are all thinking that the solution is something different from each other. And I want to explore that a little bit. Of course, I support the resolution. The resolution decries that, obviously, racist statement and the racial sentiments of the time, which undergird the basis for that decisions in the insular cases. But also, to some extent, some of these sentiments are being revived today. But beating up racism is not going to resolve these issues. That's my concern. My concern is, of course, the racial animus and the racial disrespect that is evident. And I've been teaching this for almost 40 years. In any class, any class on federal territorial relations or history of Guam that I've ever taught, always at high school and university level, always draws attention to the racial animus that is implied in the insular cases. But so, let's say the racism is decried, then what? What happens next? Well, the case, the underpinnings of the case still are intact. The U.S. Congress still has the authority to deal with the territories in any way they want. So, saying that the underpinnings of this, the insular cases is racist doesn't really change anything. I don't think it changes anything. And so, then the next phase is what is critical. And when we go to the next phase, then we see the wide differences of opinions that are going to be presented today or have already been presented, which is, some people think we're fighting for full equality as American citizens. Well, I know lots of people who don't really want that. They're not fighting for full citizenship, quote, first-class citizenship, whatever that may bring with it. They are fighting for independence, they're fighting for free association, they're fighting for some kind of other status, which may not include first-class citizenship. Fighting for representation, fighting for representation in the federal government. What does that really mean in this context? I'll tell you that there are two items here that the U.S. Congress themselves can do, and that's what we should think about in our agreement, even in our agreement with this resolution here in the Guam Legislature and in agreement with Congressman Grijalva's resolution in front of the Natural Resources Committee. The first is of, obviously, Congress has the so-called plenary of power to immediately grant elements of first-class citizenship, so-called first-class citizenship. It could pass full reimbursement for Medicaid. It could say, "Let's extend SSI to the territories. Let's extend SSI." That would be like immediate, "Hey, there you go. I hate racism, and more than that, I'm going to prove it to you by giving you this, because you don't deserve to be treated differently." But then our friends from the District of Columbia, they run around with bumper stickers and frames on their license plate that say, "No representation without taxation." So, what is the corollary with that? No representation without taxation? What is the next corollary? What is connected to that? So, you can see that the pursuit of first-class citizenship has some elements to it which need to be fully understood and explored, and in which our friends from the District of Columbia have articulated a process which may not apply in the territory. They've articulated a goal that may not apply to the territory. Secondly, the U.S. Congress can now say, "You know what? We're going to engage in a binding political status resolution for each of the territories, because we have the power to do that." And because the scope of the authority of the U.S. Congress under the insular cases is that they can craft almost any arrangement they want, they could actually do that. So, you have two possible solutions coming right out of there. The Congress can immediately, well, to the extent that immediate means anything in the U.S. Congress, can immediately say, "You know what? We're going to create a binding process," because we can. But the reality is, I don't think Congress is going to exercise either of those options. It could grant, it could grant elements of so-called first-class citizenship to the people of Guam and the territories right away, or it could help resolve the political status quandary that we're in by authorizing a binding process. The binding process is on them and on us. Anything short of that means that we'll always be trying to, you know, jump to reach a bar, and when we reach that bar, they'll raise the bar a little bit more, and we don't know where we're going to end up. And that's, that's the element of being a colony. So, the insular cases was not just racial, it also encoded into the political DNA of the United States of America that colonies are okay, and we have several of them to prove this case. And although Congress has a right to resolve this, it's not going to. And so, that's the quandary that we're faced with in this resolution. And I would, although I support the resolution, I would support it with greater vigor. If it had a provision in there that said, "Congress should begin the process of creating a binding political status resolution process tailored for each territory," because we deserve that. We don't deserve the same process that the Virgin Islands have. We don't deserve the same process that Puerto Rico has. We deserve a different process, because we don't even deserve the same process that the CNMI had, because they've already been through that. And it's true, the first guest, it's true that the insular cases has provided some insulation for Article 12, the land alienation, a provision of the Commonwealth. And it's true, you know, the CNMI is the only U.S. jurisdiction that's allowed to violate one man, one vote. Ironically, the Senate President from the CNMI sits in a body in which, which, under the Supreme Court decisions, could be challenged. Maybe no one's challenged it, I don't know. Maybe that's the issue there. But I do want to point out that the solution to this is more important than just beating up the racists who are long gone and dead. Thank you very much.
And Dankaluna Sizus Mossi, Congressman Underwood, I will definitely ensure your points be included in our recommendations reflected in the final resolution. Colleagues, the next on our panel is Commissioner Bruce S. Augustine Lille. Commissioner Lille is a Chamorro civil rights advocate and the Commissioner of the District of Columbia's Mayor's Commission on Asian and Pacific Islander Affairs. As the first and only Pacific Islander Commissioner appointed to the Commission on Asian-Pacific American Affairs, he leads the Commission's Pacific Islander Task Force, which includes many of the Pacific Embassies in D.C., American Samoa Society, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, and others. Mr. Commissioner, I hope we can add the Guam Legislature to your task force and continue this partnership. Sizus Mossi, for being with us this morning, and you may begin your presentation at this time.
Tremunia Barnes and distinguished committee members. Buenas, Sanjafa de, toru hamzu. Naonhusi Bruce S. Augustine Layal, za sumasaga, zo gita District of Columbia, tano iman Nakochtank tribe, familiya Robad, Sarasa, za familiya Shokkan clan, zo gineng guahan. Greetings to you all. My name is Bruce S. Augustine Layal, and I live in D.C., land of the Nakochtank tribe. I belong to the Robad, Sarasa, and Shokkan clans from Guam. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of Guam Legislature's Resolution 5636, relative to supporting Chairman Grijalva's House Resolution 279, and to reject the discrimination faced by the 3.5 million Americans living in U.S. Territories, 98% of whom are Black, Indigenous, and people of color. I am a Chamorro civil rights advocate and the Commissioner of Asian and Pacific Islander Affairs in the district that was appointed in 2018 by D.C. Mayor Muriel Bowser to the commission, where I serve as an advocate for the district's Asian-American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander communities. The commission was established in 1986 to advise local elected officials, government agencies, and the public on the views and needs of the district's AA-NHPI communities. I was raised by warriors. My mother, grandmother, and grandfather served in the United States military to defend our nation's democratically constitutional principles. It is a proud tradition in Guam and other U.S. Territories, with over 100,000 veterans calling these islands home. Today, on the island of warriors where America's Day begins, Chamoros are trained to take a bullet for their country, but they are denied the ballot when it's time to vote for their commander-in-chief. Although Guam residents are American citizens by birth, they are unequally American, politically disenfranchised, and systematically denied certain federal benefits in violation of the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. The foundation of this un-American relationship is the insular cases, a line of Plessy-era Supreme Court decisions which held that certain constitutional provisions and the promise of eventual political equality do not apply to unincorporated territories like Guam. As Justice Harlan explained in one of his powerful dissents in Downs v. Bidwell, "The idea that this country may acquire territories anywhere upon the earth, the people inhabiting them to enjoy only such rights as Congress chooses to accord to them, is wholly inconsistent with the spirit and genius, as well as with the words of the Constitution." And yet, the sons and daughters of Guam who fight alongside their fellow American soldiers are effectively denied equal rights and representation under the law on the basis of their geographical residence. The insular cases, which Justice Breyer called "a dark cloud" during oral arguments in Aurelius last year, institutionalized racial discrimination against Chamoros and other Americans in U.S. Territories. This dark cloud continues to impact how millions of Americans in Guam and other U.S. Territories are perceived by the courts and Congress today. These ugly American contradictions did not arise in a vacuum. They were incubated at some of our nation's top law schools. Chief among these legal scholars was Yale Law Professor and principal founder of the American Bar Association, Simeon E. Baldwin, who opined that giving the half-civilized morals of the Philippines or the ignorant and lawless brigands that infest Puerto Rico constitutional rights would be a serious obstacle to the maintenance there of an efficient government. From 1898 to 1950, for 52 years, the United States Navy governed the people of Guam without their consent through the practice of benevolent assimilation, substituting the mild way of justice and rights for arbitrary rule. While U.S. citizenship was recognized for Puerto Ricans in 1917 and for Virgin Islanders in 1927, the Chamorro peoples' advocacy efforts for U.S. citizenship and civil rights were consistently thwarted by U.S. naval opposition. From 1901 to 1950, numerous civil rights petitions were forwarded to Congress from Guam, the earliest of which articulated that a military government at best is distasteful and highly repugnant to the fundamental principles of a civilized government. The political disenfranchisement of Pacific Islanders and other citizens in U.S. Territories is inextricably linked to the legacy of the disenfranchisement of Black voters. In D.C.'s fight to establish the state of Douglas Commonwealth, we are faced with overwhelming microaggressions which shrink our democracy and threaten our livelihood. Chief among these microaggressions is the misguided notion that the district's population of over 700,000 residents larger than two states is too micro or too small to become a state. In 1832, a white man in Paris coined the term "micronesia" to denote the smallness of the island region and culture area in the Pacific Ocean, the largest body of water in the world. Micro, smallness, like the smallest particles and organisms which can't even be seen by the naked eye. Smallness, micro, is written into the name they call us, Micronesians. Smallness is the argument used to oppress and disenfranchise marginalized communities from the U.S. Territory of Guam, where America's Day begins, to the District of Columbia, the land of taxation without representation. This colonial framing of our cultural region provided the justification for the colonization of Oceania and perpetuates the belittlement of Itautautano, the people of the land. To say that we are micro is to dehumanize us. To say that we are micro is to weaponize colonial metrics against us. It implies that you need a tool to better see us. So, here we are on Zoom. The ongoing disenfranchisement of Pacific Islanders is a mark of inferiority, which provides the necessary conditions for the colonial subordination and by extension, the increased militarization of the Pacific and its people. But as we shrink, as we sink, the military grows, and the military knows that when the Chamorro people are given an option, they will always choose justice and rights over arbitrary rule. Scattered throughout the Marianas are reminders of the many war atrocities still felt by Itautautano. During the violent Japanese occupation in Guam, thousands of Chamoros, including many of my family members, suffered severe deprivation along the 1944 March encampment of Palapofo and Menengo. The cumulative and intergenerational colonial trauma of the Chamorro people is further compounded by the colonial status quo in Guam and other territories, which violates the U.S.'s commitments under international law to political participation and democratic accountability. How can we manifest our own destinies when we are denied political equality and the inalienable right to self-determination? In 1946, the United Nations created the Commission on Human Rights, which was led by Eleanor Roosevelt. On the heels of the U.N.'s adoption of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, she posed an essential question. she posed an essential question where after all do universal human rights begin in small places close to home so close and so small that they cannot be seen on any maps of the world yet they are the world of the individual person the neighborhood he lives in the school or college he attends the factory farm or office where he works such are the places where every man woman and child seeks equal justice equal opportunity and equal dignity without discrimination unless these rights have meaning there they have little meaning anywhere as our nation emerges from the shadows of white supremacy where America's day begins we must condemn the insular cases and unequivocally reject the undemocratic status quo rooted in racial animus against Pacific Islanders and other Americans in US territories accordingly I urge the Guam Legislature to adopt Resolution 5636 the Tramoro people of Guam have struggled for 123 years from 1898 to 2021 to survive historically socially politically and economically we can no longer speak softly when we sit at the tip of Uncle Sam's diplomatic stick where 123 years later we remain disenfranchised and disempowered this hypocrisy shrinks our democracy mitau taotano have not forgotten and we will not heal until we are made whole by those who shrink us undankulu na Sizus Massey.
Undankulu na Sizus Massey Commissioner Bruce San Augustine Lill and Zan Sizus on Vinidisi the next on our panel is Director Melvin Wanpat Bora Director Wanpat Bora is the Executive Director of the Guam Commission on Decolonization and has been on the front line of decolonization efforts in Guam he is also the President of the Department of Tramoral Affairs and the Acting Director of the Guam Public Library System prior to his appointment he served as an educator in the public school system for over a decade most recently with Southern High School Mr Wanpat Bora holds a Bachelor's in Education focusing on secondary education and a Master's in Pacific Island Studies from the University of Hawaii at Manoa Director Wanpat Bora Banana Sizus you may begin your testimony at this time.
Banana Sizus Sizus Massey Vice Speaker Senators and our guests online for attending and offering your support buenas sanjafa de for the past 122 years Guam has been an unincorporated territory of the United States governed by the unilateral authority of Congress and the doctrines established by the insular cases in 1901 these holdings and their significance continue to define the US territories as quote belonging to of the United States prior to the insular cases the goal of the territorial acquisition was ultimately statehood the insular cases then created and defined the distinctions between an unincorporated territory an incorporated territory and an unincorporated territory the former being the territories that would eventually become states and the latter for territories that were to belong to the US but not to be wholly integrated as part of it as Governor Joseph Adda stated quote by defining these new possessions as unincorporated territories the Supreme Court ruled that the United States could continue to possess and control them without ever having to take them in as full and equal parts of the United States end quote the rulings further affirmed and defined the US Congress's plenary power over the territories as granted by the territorial clause of the Constitution thus giving Congress the power to quote dispose of and make any make all needful rules and regulations respecting the territory or other property belonging to the United States end quote today Guam and the rest of the territories remain subject to this absolute unilateral authority of the federal government therefore despite their racist foundations and clear defiance of democratic principles the doctrines established by the insular cases continue to define our colonial relationship with the United States to add insult to injury the United States continues to consider these racist discernitions as quote unquote good law further perpetuating the fundamental inequity that plagues us Guam's Commission on Decolonization is a product of this longstanding political inequity that is rooted in the systematic denial of the right to Tramoros self determination Guam has been a colony of the United States since the signing of the Treaty of Paris in 1898 since that time the advancement of the civil and political rights of the quote unquote native inhabitants of Guam has been the sole responsibility of the US Congress Congress could use its full authority over territories as affirmed by the insular cases to facilitate an exercise of self determination through a plebiscite instead the right to Tramoros self determination has been continuously denied and the plight of the Tramoru ignored by the US Congress in 1902 petition written by 32 prominent Guam residents seeking redress from the tyrannical naval government in Guam was sent to the US Congress the petition was received recorded and ignored the cries of the Tramoru for more democratic form of government would not be answered for another 48 years with the signing of the Organic Act of Guam in 1950 it is important to note that while the Organic Act of Guam granted our people with US citizenship it was enacted without the express consent of our people in essence our current status and form of government was imposed upon our people by Congress and the right to determine our political future was not considered when we outgrew the Organic Act and demanded a more equitable relationship with the United States the Guam Commonwealth Draft Act was crafted and approved by the people of Guam the Commonwealth Draft Act was introduced in Congress not once not twice but five times each time the act died in committee and our calls for increased self-government never reached the congressional floor for consideration beyond ignoring our plight the federal government has actively interfered with and obstructed our quest for self determination notably with the most recent use of the judicial system that failed to uphold the United States moral legal and internationally recognized obligation to the colonized people of Guam the indigenous Tramoru as seen with the Davis versus Guam case that ruled Guam's plebiscite to be unconstitutional Guam's issues require more than just recognition of the undemocratic and immoral injustices enabled by the insular cases which are themselves outdated and rooted in the same racist ideology of Plessy versus Ferguson resolution of our longstanding grievances requires meaningful action at a fundamental policy level and not just further juridical complication similar to my stance on the issue of national voting rights I write this testimony not as outright opposition nor outright support for this resolution but as a cautionary statement on the danger of allowing our core issue to be shrouded by cosmetic changes that do not necessarily strengthen our position or our ability to right this historical wrong history is clear Guam and the federal government do not agree on the path forward to resolve this issue the people of Guam have spoken through the democratic system of our government we desire dignified treatment of the native people of Guam we want genuine resolution of our political inequity not just political status improvements we have asserted that we want the colonized people of Guam to decide for themselves what they want their political status to be then and only then can we find peaceful resolution it is my hope that abolishing the insular cases will be but a stepping stone to genuine self determination and decolonization for all territories overturning the insular cases without addressing the uniqueness of each territory's relationship to the United States would be a disservice to the territories each territory needs to be given a meaningful opportunity to choose what kind of relationship they want with the United States this decision must be clearly expressed through an act of self determination in the case of Guam this time will come when the Tramoru people are given an opportunity to express their desires we must defend the sacred right to choose freely and the United States must act in accordance with the expressed will of the Tramoru people who have for too long been ignored by the United States and denied this right we must also remember that while a congressional resolution to recognize the injustices of the insular cases will right some historical wrongs it does not advance our quest for self determination which must be at the forefront of all we do HR 279 cannot substitute or be prioritized over our pursuit for self determination and genuine decolonization without deliberately demanding that the United States address our core issue that Tramoru people whose rights have been trampled on by the US for more than 120 years can never truly know justice and will remain trapped in the cogs of colonization Sizus Massey.
Buendupetu Director Wanpat Bora at this time colleagues I will open the floor up for any questions that my colleagues may have I will note that Senator Strauss has to leave in a few minutes and I will go ahead and open it up for questions for him first before we ask the rest of the panel and I hope that in the interest of time we still have a long list of members to folks that would like to testify so I'd like to see if we can have our colleagues limit their questions to one at this round if not not no more than two so Senator Torres any comments or question at this time Senator Blas?
Thank you Madam Chair Mr Bora and also Congressman Underwood if you're still on thank you very much for your testimony and I reason why I'm going to thank you for your testimonies I I sit here and I look at the resolution and I see the Resolution 279 and I have to agree with you while our resolution is in support of congressional resolution I would have hoped that our resolution would have been in support of not just a resolution but a bill we have seen over the decades the numerous attempts to be able to try to right this injustice but you know many times in the form of resolution or a bill that just doesn't go anywhere and I have to agree and I want to thank you and Dr Underwood I want to thank you too is I guess the question is to the whole panel and with respect for the efforts that are ongoing and not just in our resolution but in the resolution before Congress but what's to stop or why isn't this why can't this be in a stronger legislative form such as a bill not I'm not speaking about our Resolution 56 and maybe Mr Wanpat I want to ask you here is what's your take and what's your feeling of what's stopping or why do we have to continue to do this why do we have to continue to plead for our ability why should we plead for our ability to do to determine our political future why doesn't Congress and why doesn't the United States Congress or Senate just take it upon themselves to finally recognize that to recognize that what they're how they're governing us they call us savages this is barbaric so I'd like to open Mr Wanpat what's your take on this?
Sizus Massey Senator I think that's an excellent question I felt that Congressman Underwood stated it fairly eloquently that you know Congress really does have the authority to flip this whole dynamic on its head but instead what we have seen is that Congress has historically kind of remained mum on the issue our local push our historical efforts toward political equity have been longstanding and quite frankly very adaptive and ingenious in a lot of ways you know the the Sina who came before me those who have mentored me have really shown me that Guam has Guam has a knack for fighting above its weight class so to speak Guam has a knack for sticking its face where it's not welcome Guam has a very long history of asserting their voices in places where they are silenced and we have seen that historically we have seen that in the work that we do within the government within our community with the federal government with the international community a lot of people ask me often you know what is the what is the point of us engaging the United Nations you know they say this is a this is a strict federal issue a domestic issue something that we should only and exclusively deal with Congress on my response to that is that we have already done that we did that with the Commonwealth Draft Act we dealt almost exclusively with the federal government within that process and where did it get us you know that resolution died in committee or that Commonwealth Draft Act died in committee I think that it's insulting it's painful to know how much effort and energy and faith we put in the federal government in our local government to deliver on the Commonwealth status let's not forget that the Commonwealth status was voted on by our people and that Governor Joseph Adda was asked directly to negotiate to revise two sections of the Commonwealth Draft Act the two contentious sections which were the control of immigration Guam wanted control of its immigration the federal government did not want to give it up the other section which I think is more important for quite frankly is mutual consent mutual consent Congress straight up said that if Governor Adda would negotiate on those two items particularly mutual consent in regards to military activity that we'd have a deal we get criticized in the media quite often I won't mention the names of those who offered this criticism but it's fairly common you know that we as a government dropped the ball that we as a government failed our people by being unwilling to negotiate on the terms that were asserted to us by Congress on the Commonwealth Draft Act for Guam which I personally find as insulting because Governor Adda's response at that time to that request was very simple and straightforward he said I am not authorized to negotiate on the terms of this Commonwealth Draft Act which was voted on and decided on by my people it was not it was irresponsible and inappropriate for the governor to make that assertion after the people had spoken and he refused bless his soul for being courageous enough to stand with us to not make a deal to assert that this is the right way for us to do this and if we're not going to do it the right way we're out and that's exactly what happened we literally left Washington DC with our tails tucked between our legs we got beat up out there it was disheartening in a lot of ways fast forward to today that's the reason why the Commission on Decolonization exists it's not just the shift in rhetoric we recognize that though the federal government will say we support self determination for Guam what they won't say is that we support Tramoru self determination what they won't say is that we support decolonization because admitting those two things admits that they still have colonies to this day and that it's okay.
Director Bora if I may I do apologize I do have Senator Strauss who has to head to another meeting right now I do apologize Senator Blas also I'm going to yield right now to Minority Leader Chris Duñez to ask Senator Strauss a question he will answer and then I will yield back to Senator Blas if that's okay thank you so much for your understanding and patience Minority Leader Senator Duñez you may address your question to Senator Strauss before he leaves for his next scheduled meeting.
Thank you Madam Chair and Senator Strauss probably the one area where we agree is I'm an advocate for statehood for Guam we're talking militarization decolonization primarily and self determination here I know you said you're not qualified to comment on what Guam's path would be but this discussion of racism and the context of the insular cases and the current status as it affects Guam would you would you think that much like DC Guam, would you, would you think that, much like D.C. may be fighting for different reasons for statehood, it's a pathway and not an elimination, one on the way to the other? Because as the professor enumerated earlier, the collateral benefits, albeit the opinion that the racism, racist content of the insular cases and their effects on the territories.
Thank you for that question. For the people of the District of Columbia, statehood is really our only option. Independence isn't an option for us, although it may be tempting from time to time. We don't have the ability to freely associate. So for us, statehood was something that we voted on, that voters support in D.C., and so I support statehood for D.C., and I appreciate the support of Guam, supporting statehood for D.C. If the people of Guam supported statehood for Guam, would I support statehood for Guam? Sure, I think that would be great. Does my supporting self-determination or this resolution mean that we're going to push the debate one way or another? I don't think that's our place. But I do think that there is a common fight that we have as Americans living in territories, as Americans who are descended from folks that don't necessarily originate from these Anglo-Saxon principles or whatever racist terms they want to use, that it's still our fight to define what it means to be an American. And it is up to all of us, from a diverse background, to make sure that we never again let the term "American" be identified with a particular race, with a particular religion, with a particular nationality, because it is a creed, it is an ethos, it is a belief system. That is what unites us as a people, of different races, different religions, different languages. You know, the truth is, my family name isn't even really my family name. When my grandfather came to this country, he faced such discrimination that he felt he had to change the name of our family to better fit in. And he came here at the time when these cases were being written. And so the passion that I feel for this resolution and my hatred for these racist cases that belong on the dustbin of history is not necessarily what it means directly just for the people of Guam or the insular territories, is what it says about how my country and my patriotism is defined. Never again must we equate the values of an American society with one particular historical tradition, one particular type of religion, one particular type of race. There is no group of people whose values are different from American values. Anybody from anywhere, from any race, creed, religion, or origin can be an American if you subscribe to those values. And the citizens of Guam are some of the most patriotic, but I recognize that there are differences.
So Senator, Senator, so all the people of Guam should vote then, right?
I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that at all.
But you're saying that this is, this is, this is a discussion on inclusion in the American family. How do you discriminate voting-wise?
Let me be clear. Guam should have the right to decide how to run its elections the way they want to decide its elections. That's, that's a very different issue. This is a resolution that I understood was focused on the insular cases. The insular cases are a terrible legacy. They're a terrible legacy for all Americans. And I consider my fellow Americans, whether they're in Guam, Puerto Rico, or anyone else, to be Americans. Does that mean that, and part of that means the freedom to choose. And so I don't see anything consistent with American values and Samoro self-determination. I don't see anything different between American values and statehood for Guam. I don't see anything inconsistent with American values and democracy. But the problem is, right now, it looks like the Supreme Court has blocked the democratic process when we should be encouraging the democratic process. We had a court once tell us in the District of Columbia that we couldn't have an election because the topic of it involved marijuana. Now, people can take different views on marijuana, but the court decision said that we couldn't complete an election on marijuana because the court disagreed with the subject matter. This is the type, Congress actually imposed this law, and the court initially upheld it until it was finally returned. No American should be told by a Congress what to do, or a court what to do, until they have equal participation in their government, or the right not to be part of a government. So it, freedom is freedom. I support freedom. I support democracy.
Self-determination struggle.
For clarification, Madam Speaker, because there's some questions that are being posed here, I wanted to get the Senator on the record, because it sounds like he opposes the Supreme Court ruling, and that's what I was trying to listen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Minority Leader. At this time, I don't see that there are any other more, any other questions for Senator Strauss. I'd like to extend my, ondunklenasidzousmasi. If there's no other questions for Senator Strauss, thank you, thank you so very much.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. I will yield back to Senator Frank Blas to finish his line of questioning and comments.
Thank you.
Hopefully, you can be allowed one more question, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and again, Mr. Director Borja, thank you very much for your answer to that. I want to give the same opportunity to Congressman Underwood along the lines of, you know, could there's, could there have been a stronger legislative stance or legislative procedures to be done by the U.S. Congress with regard to this, to this issue?
Congressman Underwood?
Okay, well, thank you for the question, Senator. And of course, you know, the basic point, I think, of my earlier remarks is that this has to take an affirmative step on the part of the U.S. Congress. It's not just decrying and declaring the racism as one step. But the doctrine of incorporation and unincorporation continues on in spite of the criticism of the racism. So the question becomes then, what can Congress do? Well, Congress can do lots of things. It can move towards so-called first-class citizenship, or it can move towards authorizing a process of decolonization, of self-determination tailored for each territory and entered into a binding fashion. Don't say, "Go ahead and do it, and then we'll see what we want afterwards." You know, that's, that's different. So what has kept Congress from doing that, obviously, is the lack of political will and the lack of, you know, Congress is a political circus. It's, it's, all these things, all these activities are going on constantly around you, and there are all kinds of different manifestations of it. The way, and I've advocated this, you know, for at least a couple of decades, is that the ultimate solution to this is for the administration to propose something to Congress. And if the Biden administration, and any change that has occurred in territories in the past, has always occurred as a result of some kind of executive initiative. So if we're just talking about plain old-fashioned politics, not about, you know, constitutional theory, not about what we want and what we're going to get, and not coming up with the best rhetoric to poke another hole in this straw man, politically, you know, the Biden administration, because of its interest in social justice issues, offers us this opportunity. I don't think that opportunity would have been there in the previous administration, and maybe the Obama administration didn't have any focus on it. So now, what would get the Biden administration interested in this? Well, you can appeal to their social justice instincts, or you can use, and this is something that the Guam Legislature should consider, you can use the military buildup to our advantage. And that's, that's just a political analysis. And, you know, I'm no longer in that game, but that's my view of it. And of course, Congress will always take the easier route out. And so the easier route for now is to criticize the racist underpinnings of the insular cases, but basically, it leaves the insular cases, the effects of it are still intact. And, you know, as someone was recounting the, the political history of Guam, in which in 1968 elective governorship was granted to the people of Guam, that's an exercise of that kind of plenary authority that the Congress had. At the same time they did that, they eliminated one provision from the Organic Act, which many people don't, lack familiarity with. And that is, they, they put in elective governorship, but they took out preference for persons of Guamanian ancestry in government of Guam employment. And that provision was in there originally. It was in the original Organic Act that the government of Guam could give preference to persons of, quote, "Guamanian ancestry." And, you know, what did "Guamanian" mean in the 1950s and what did it mean in 1960s? Well, it meant something different than what it means today. And so those people had preference in government of Guam hiring because they could do it. Congress could do it. And so it was there. And the government of Guam exercised that preference. And then when they decided to give elective governorship, they yanked it out. And I don't know whether people were that much aware of it, but it could have left it in. And that's the nature of the plenary authority. Now, expecting them to come up with some broad-based solution to all of these things is really far stretched, but I think politically, it stands a better chance of consideration if the Biden administration comes up with some kind of, you know, approach to the territories that moves towards decolonization. And thank you, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Dr. Underwood. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas and Congressman Underwood. Please note that we'll definitely take all the recommendations today and make sure that we append it into the report for the hearing next week on H.R. 279. Are there any other questions for this panel? I do know that we have two other panels coming up, and there's about 10 of them. So are there no other questions, audio? Speaker, did you have a question at this time? If not, Senator Brown? Did you have a question?
No, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Again, I'm just also appreciative of everyone that's had the opportunity to provide their input with regards to this resolution, and certainly to move, move along with the other people that would like to testify. I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Senator Tonietta?
None at this time, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up on the agenda, colleagues and to the listening audience, I would like to welcome our next set of panel members that are joining us here this morning. I've grouped this panel based on their expertise, and I would like to welcome our panel of legal scholars and experts. The first on this panel is the Attorney General of Guam, Attorney General Levin Camacho. As a son of Guam, the legacy, the legacy of the insular cases has been a lived, lived experience for Attorney General Levin Taituno Camacho. As an attorney, he has advocated for equitable treatment of Guam and her people. In his role as the Attorney General, he continues to fight for Guam and works to build alliances across the country through the National Association of Attorneys, of Attorney Generals, where he is the first AG from Guam to sit on the Executive Committee. At this time, I welcome Attorney Levin Camacho to present his testimony. Mananasidzous, Attorney Camacho, please proceed.
Good morning, Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, Speaker Trelawney, Senators, and fellow panelists. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide testimony on Resolution 56. I think we can all glean now, there's no disagreement that the racist ideology reflected in the insular cases should be rejected. And I'm not going to rehash a lot of what has already been talked about. I noticed I have a bunch of legal scholars, and I'll pull up my foreign and domestic sense. If you haven't picked up a coffee, I'll make a plug. It's really great. It's a little bit old now, but there's a lot of new law review articles being written on it. There's a case currently pending before the United States Supreme Court that will address whether it is constitutional to deny supplemental security income benefits to Americans in Puerto Rico. And there's a similar challenge brought on behalf of a resident of Guam pending in the Ninth Circuit, who is represented by Attorney Rodney Jacob. And at the core, its arguments are that it is not rational to deny our disabled and our blind access to need-based programs solely because they live in Guam or any other territory. And as I was preparing for today's testimony and today's hearing, I remember that I, nine years ago, I was actually on a panel with several people who are going to testify today, including Dr. Underwood and Attorney Rodney Jacob, and we were speaking to lawyers about the insular cases and the impact of that body of law. At the time, it was hosted by Chief Judge Tadek Goh Gatewood, and the presentation was derived from a presentation given by Chief Judge Gelpe. And the significance of that is those are the two judges who have ruled that the SSI program and the denial of benefits to those living in Puerto Rico and in Guam violates the guarantees of equal protection. I think it's very important to say that as we talk about the insular cases, the harm is not hypothetical. We have folks and plaintiffs who are living in the United States and who have to decide between being with family or continuing to receive SSI benefits. And the insular cases is not something, with all due respect to the panelists after me, that is typically taught in law school. And there are many attorneys who were aware of the insular cases but weren't quite sure of the legacy and its origins, its racist origins. So just to, again, build on what's been presented before, there are really two paths to change. One is through Congress, and one is through the courts. And this morning's gathering reflects the sense that we are approaching another rare and historic opportunity to make significant change in our efforts at addressing historical injustice. In Congress, there's a movement for statehood in D.C. There's a movement towards resolution of Puerto Rico's political status, and there are several congressional resolutions, including House Resolution 279, which have brought territorial issues to the forefront. The courts, both in Guam and Puerto Rico, have already concluded that it is denial, that the denial of benefits to residents of the territories is not rational and violates the guarantees of equal protection. The Supreme Court has largely avoided taking the insular cases head-on, but will have to address it in the upcoming case with Viomadera, which will be heard later this year. So I am grateful that the legislature, Governor Leon Guero, and Congressman Siniklis are going to capitalize on this opportunity to fight for equity in Guam and the other territories. And as I wrap up my remarks, I say it's always timely to fight discrimination, but it is especially timely to be doing so now during the annual celebration of Law Week with its theme, "Advancing the Rule of Law." As government leaders and as attorneys, we take an oath to respect the rule of law and to uphold the law of the United States and the laws applicable to our islands. But we also have to respect that laws have to be changed if they are tools of oppression, whether that is oppression based on racist ideology or colonial practice. And with that, Vice Speaker, I'll preserve and that, that's the end conclusion of my remarks.
Sizou Smasi, Attorney Camacho. Next up, colleagues, we have Attorney Neil Weir. Attorney Weir grew up in Guam, graduating from Southern High School and working then with Senator Lou Leon Guero, Senator Tom Adda, and former Congresswoman Madeline Z. Bredaliu. As president and founder of Equally American, he advocates for equality and the right to vote for U.S. citizens living in Guam and other territories. As one of the nation's leading experts on U.S. territories, he leads litigation challenging the insular cases in court, recently thought legal seminars on the law of U.S. territories at Yale and Columbia Law Schools, and recently published after Aurelius, "What Future for the Insular Cases?" in the Yale Law Journal Forum. Attorney Weir, ondunklenasidzousmasi, for being here, you may begin your presentation and testimony at this time. Please proceed.
Thank you. Buenos dias. Great to be back in the Guam Legislature. Unfortunately, not in person. Would love to have the chance to do that. Exciting to see, Vice Speaker, how your leadership has grown and many other senators who I had the opportunity to work with, either in their capacity as senators or staff at the time. And so very happy to be back today, and thanks for this opportunity to testify. My name is Neil Weir. I'm the founder and president of Equally American Legal Defense and Education Fund. I founded Equally American in 2013, and remains the only public interest law organization focused exclusively on advancing equality in on advancing equality and civil rights in Guam and other U.S. territories. Building on the progress of earlier civil rights movements, we approach our work through a civil rights lens. We do not take position on political status in the territories other than to reject the undemocratic status quo. In other words, we seek to obtain full constitutional rights and political equality for disenfranchised communities in the territories, while at the same time supporting these communities' right to determine their own future relationship to the United States through a process of self determination and decolonization. Simply put, America has a colonies problem and the reason is clear. A series of racist early 1900s Supreme Court decisions known as the Insular Cases that invented a new legal doctrine designed to transform the United States from a nation founded on the rejection of colonialism to one that embraced colonial expansion. Guam, of course, is central, a central part of any conversation about the insular cases and America's colonies problem. Guam has been part of the United States now for 123 years. Yet from a civil rights perspective, the United States continues to deny residents of Guam voting rights and representation in Congress, or even recognize the constitutional right to citizenship, even as Congress maintains the power to govern Guam unilaterally. From a human rights perspective, the United States has fallen far short of its commitments to self determination, decolonization and indigenous rights. However you look at it, Guam is a colony of the United States. Following the acquisition of Guam, of Guam, Hawaii, Puerto Rico and the other overseas territories in 1898, the Supreme Court's decision in the Insular Cases broke from its prior precedent to establish a doctrine of territorial incorporation. The Insular Cases and the doctrine of territorial incorporation not only ratified, but constitutionalized the era's racism and racial hierarchies. And this way, the Insular Cases provided a constitutional license for the United States to have permanent colonies. I think Dr. Underwood put it really well here, saying that the Insular Cases encoded into the United States political DNA that colonies are okay. While the Insular Cases are perhaps best known for limiting the application of certain constitutional provisions in so called unincorporated territories, their most far reaching effect has been to justify the perpetual denial of political equality and self determination to these overseas communities of color. But while Plessy's doctrine of separate and unequal has long been overruled, the Insular Cases doctrine of separate and unequal remains valid Supreme Court precedent. Political inequality for residents of Guam has resulted in significant economic inequality, demonstrating why the Insular Cases and the colonial framework they established must be, must be viewed as kitchen table issues, not simply abstract matters of principle. Some of the previous speakers have talked about inequality when it comes to Medicaid, SSI, and, and the lack of participation and questions about national security militarization on Guam and more. I think Attorney General Camacho put it very well, saying that the harm of the Insular Cases is not hypothetical. At bottom, this political inequality for residents of Guam and other territories means these vital decisions are being made in the absence of the usual democratic checks and balances. The grim reality is that until residents of the territories are able to vote for president and have voting representation in Congress, decisions will continue to be made without their input. It could be the difference between life or death for too many. All this raises two fundamental questions that are critical to both ask and answer as we chart a path past the Insular Cases and the colonial framework they established. One that I, I thought Senator Strauss spoke to very eloquently is a question that the people of the United States must ask themselves. Who are we and who do we want to be? And what does that mean regarding our relationship with residents of the territories? Another question that Melvin Juan Pat Borja spoke to, I think, very eloquently is the question that the people of Guam must ask themselves. Who are we and who do we want to be? And what does that mean regarding our relationship with the United States? Groups like the Fanogi Coalition and the Commission on Decolonization are doing excellent work addressing the second question, primarily through a human rights framework. Over the last decade, they've raised the bar significantly in terms of both the quality and quantity of discourse and advocacy on these issues. Equally American is focused on the first question, primarily through a civil rights framework. That is, so long as Guam and other territories are part of the United States, what rights should residents of these areas enjoy as U.S. citizens? The United States is to be the anti colonial nation it was founded upon. What does that mean for its relationship with residents of U.S. territories today? There's a view by many in Washington, D.C. that the federal government does not need to do anything regarding the territories until the people of the territories clearly express what it is that they want. We reject that view, arguing that the United States, all three branches, have an independent duty to act to bring the status of residents of the territories in line with America's democratic and constitutional values, even as the people of the territories continue to engage in the process of self determination, decolonization. At the same time, the people of the territories need not and should not wait for the United States to act, to stand up for their civil and human rights. And I think a lot of the speakers today demonstrate just how people are doing that today. In many, if not most ways, these human rights and civil rights conversations are parallel and mutually reinforcing. I think we saw a lot of that in what Ralph Bunch had to say today. In particular, all sides should be able to agree that the Insular Cases and the colonial framework they established are continuing threat to civil and human rights that need to be dismantled once and for all. The next two years present unprecedented opportunities in all three branches of the federal government to turn the page on the Insular Cases and the colonial framework they established. Last year, the Supreme Court questioned the continued validity of the Insular Cases, indicating that the Insular Cases should not be further extended. In Aurelius, the Supreme Court continued the trend of narrowing and cabining the Insular Cases, although it stopped short of overruling them, noting that the issue wasn't squarely presented in that case. A new vehicle for the Supreme Court to reconsider the Insular Cases is currently working its way towards the Supreme Court. And Fidesz Manu versus United States, a case brought by Equally American on behalf of American Samoans who are denied recognition as U.S. citizens. The United States is relying on the Insular Cases to argue that there is no constitutional right to U.S. citizenship for people born in so called unincorporated territories, meaning Congress could unilaterally revoke citizenship for people born on Guam, possibly both prospectively and even retrospectively. A district court in Utah rejected that view. And if their decision is upheld, upheld by the U.S. Appeals Court for the Tenth Circuit, this would create a circuit split with the D C Circuit, making it very likely the Supreme Court would take up the issue. If history teaches us anything, simply waiting for the Supreme Court to reverse a century of injustice is not enough. I commend House Resources Chair Raul Garhava for his bipartisan resolution calling for the Insular Cases to be rejected. As Vice Speaker had said, Chair Garhava is going to be holding a historic hearing on this resolution next week, marking the first time Congress has ever held a hearing specifically on the Insular Cases, which I think is a momentous occasion. It's also important that we, as, as, as Dr. Underwood spoke about, it's important that we directly push the Biden Harris administration to take action on these issues, to reject the Insular Cases and the colonial framework that they established. President Joe Biden and Vice President Kamala Harris have made a commitment to equality and racial justice, a centerpiece of their administration. This commitment will soon be put to the test when the Biden Harris Department of Justice must decide in cases like Fidesz Manu versus United States, whether to continue relying on the Insular Cases. It's exciting to see Guam's leaders taking an active role in pushing the federal government on these issues and many others. Resolutions like, like this one help build pressure for all three branches of the federal government to act to condemn the Insular Cases and take seriously the need to advance civil and human rights for residents of Guam and other territories. A century of colonialism as constitutional doctrine is enough. Thank you. Those are my remarks and I'll look forward to questions at the end of the panel.
And Dr. Luna Sizou Smasi, Attorney Weir. I'm going to shift a little bit and acknowledge the next member on the panel, which is Professor Rafael Cox Alomar. Professor Cox Alomar teaches at the University of the District of Columbia. He is an international lawyer from Puerto Rico and has advocated a form of freely associated status for Puerto Rico. Professor, we greatly appreciate your attendance today. You may proceed with your presentation.
Many thanks, Speaker. I'm very honored for this invitation coming from Vice Speaker Munia, the granddaughter of.
Can you speak closer to your mic?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, Professor. Thank you very much. Please proceed.
I'm honored, yes, I'm honored at this invitation. I speak from Puerto Rico. We have parallel histories. On Ponce de León and the Spaniard, and the Spanish colonization of Puerto Rico bound us to Guam, Guahan, which was actually discovered by Magallanes and Elcano. And as the people of Guam, we were also silenced in Paris when the Paris Treaty was being negotiated in 1898. And as the people of Guam, we are today also subjected to Congress's plenary authority under the territorial clause of the U.S. Constitution. The American model of territorial governance is both colonial and anti democratic. The subjugation of close to four million U.S. citizens in Puerto Rico, in Guam, in the U V I, in the Mariana Islands, in the American Samoa, under a system of indefinite political subservience is not only immoral, but contrary to the framers constitutional design. There can be no place for the doctrine of territorial incorporation within America's constitutional topography. Second class citizenship is eminently unconstitutional. Not surprised Biden administration is besieged today by an admissions petition from the District of Columbia, which has twice passed the House and two bills demanding Puerto Rico's decolonization. Moreover, litigation at the federal level still is pending in cases implicating the scope of Congress's plenary powers under the territorial clause. The territorial delegate within America's constitutional architecture is a legal nonentity, owing its existence to a congressional grace. Washington is in desperate need of a new policy for engaging the territories. Leaving the territories to rot in a perpetual state of political tutelage is far from satisfactory. In the context of Puerto Rico, which is by far the more populous territory, the path towards decolonization must entail a choice between statehood with all its rights and duties and international sovereignty, addressing the democratization needs of the remaining territories. And if the U.S. citizens domiciled therein might require looking at different possibilities in light of our different histories and perhaps from a legal perspective, might even require in certain contexts amending the federal constitution in order to provide the special jurisdictions, the right to vote in presidential elections and more equitable participation in Congress, including the Senate. For the American territories in sum, the future holds an uphill yet indispensable battle. I want to make one parting observation, which is that in my estimation, the insular cases really have no redeeming value. Point number two. Besides the insular cases, perhaps the more pervasive adversary that we face is the doctrine of Congress's plenary powers under the territories clause. And the doctrine of Congress's plenary powers under the territory clause antedates the insular cases. So even if the insular cases were to be revoked by the U.S. Supreme Court, still Congress would have plenary authority under the territory clause itself. So the third point I want to raise is that the federal Indian tribe model is completely in opposite to the Puerto Rico context. And I believe to the context of any of the other territories. That paradigm has been abused by Congress and we need not plot along that path. And the fourth issue I want to raise is that in the final analysis, the challenge before us is achieving decolonization and achieving decolonization in the exercise of our right to self determination, meaning that the negotiation should be open and transparent, binding Congress to a good faith effort together with the people of Guam and the people of Puerto Rico and the people of the U V I and the people of the Samoa and the people of the Mariana in order to solve the situation. So the decolonizing aspect of this is essential. And the fifth point I'm making today is that with respect to Puerto Rico, statehood is not the only option, the only solution, the only path. There is a sizable population, it's a sizable number of Puerto Ricans who really are supporting sovereignty and who really believe that the path forward is the sovereignty path. And, and that is perhaps one of the alternatives, the only alternative which doesn't depend on the U.S. Congress. And, and that is a very important alternative that should be on the table and that we should address more fully, more seriously as we move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Professor Cox Alomar. I do know that you have to leave also right away. I will ask my colleagues if there are any, if there are any questions for Professor Cox Alomar at this time. I do appreciate your time, Professor, and thank you so very much.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
If not, we will go ahead and proceed with our next panel member. Next is the Professor of Constitutional Law and International Human Rights Law at Harvard Law School and Director of Human Rights Program, Professor Gerald Newman. Professor Newman has written extensively about the geographical scope of constitutional rights, including in his book, Strangers to the Constitution, nineteen ninety six. He also co edited the volume, Reconsidering the Insular Cases, The Past and Future of the American Empire, two thousand and fifteen. Professor Newman, it is truly an honor to have you with us this morning. You may begin your presentation at this time.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. It is an honor to me to be included in this important conversation. I thank you very much for that. I'm grateful for this opportunity to speak with you about the insular cases in two oh one and the resulting doctrine. I support the main thrust of this resolution. But I come in humility as a legal scholar living in Massachusetts who does not pretend to know what would be best for people of Guam. I will discuss the law as I understand it after long study and will not make a recommendation. As a citizen of Massachusetts, I would like to see the federal government repudiate the insular cases of nineteen oh one because they were based in colonialism and explicit racism, openly expressed in the opinions of the justices in the majority, and they have led to serious injustice over the years. But I am less sure about what should be done next. The insular cases establish a distinction between incorporated territories that are fully part of the United States and unincorporated territories that merely belong to the United States for the purpose of denying to people in the unincorporated territories the benefit of certain non fundamental constitutional provisions that had been applied to territories on the North American continent. The doctrine was explicitly intended to give the colonizers greater flexibility governing territory whose inhabitants were regarded as different and inferior. It may be worth mentioning, however, that the doctrine made location rather than personal status decisive. Not only colonial subjects, but also citizens of the states lost the benefit of non fundamental rights while present in an unincorporated territory. The Supreme Court could eliminate this distinction between incorporated and unincorporated territories by overruling the territorial incorporation doctrine. And Congress could presumably overcome the distinction for particular territories by declaring them incorporate. by declaring them incorporated by statute. But merely changing status from unincorporated to incorporated territory would not resolve the remnants of colonialism the territories such as Guam face. Incorporated territories do not get votes in the U.S. Senate or the House of Representatives or in the Electoral College in presidential elections. Congress has full power to legislate for incorporated territories on all subjects. Congress can overturn a territorial law at will. Congress can repeal its own legislation for a territory. Equal protection places no significant limit on discrimination between one incorporated territory and another or between an incorporated territory and a state. And incorporated territories have no enforceable right to statehood if they want it. Turning the clock back to the nineteenth century will not solve these problems. Meanwhile, since the late twentieth century, some unincorporated territories or commonwealths have sought to appropriate the insular cases doctrine as a means for exercising flexibility to accommodate local preferences that diverge from national constitutional standards. That is emphatically not the purpose for which the Supreme Court originally adopted the doctrine, but it is a purpose for which the doctrine might be usable today. In part, these issues relate to the non-application of constitutional provisions in an unincorporated territory, but in part to differences in interpretation between how a constitutional provision applies in a territory and how it applies in the states. Some lower courts have accepted this usage and the Supreme Court itself may have given it some encouragement twenty years ago in its decision in Torres versus Sabla, affirming without opinion a judgment that upheld the unequal apportionment of representatives in the commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands. There is no necessary logical link between the persistence of the unincorporated territory doctrine and the adaptation of constitutional principles to local needs. But it may be more likely that the Supreme Court and the circus would hold the territories to mainland standards if that doctrine were overruled. That may be particularly true for local legislation that is intended for indigenous self-determination, but that the current Supreme Court may view as impermissibly race-based. In other words, decisions like Davis versus Guam might be more likely to occur if the incorporation doctrine were overruled. What I am describing here are uncertainties, not certainties. It is not easy to predict what course constitutional doctrine may take in the next decade or in the decades to follow. These questions may be considered as matter of short-term strategy or long-term strategy. Official recognition by the federal government of the historical injustice of the insular cases of nineteen oh one may be a first step toward reshaping more just relations between the federal government and what are now called unincorporated territory, but only a first step. The current Supreme Court may not be a helpful ally in taking the next steps forward. In the long run, both political steps and legal steps will be needed and different territories may choose different paths. I know that it is not for me to say which path the people of Guam should take. Many thanks for giving me the opportunity to share these thoughts.
One dunkle Luna Sizos-Masi, Professor Newman, for your presentation here this morning. I want to note, colleagues, that next on our panel is Professor Christina Ponza Kraus. Professor Ponza Kraus joined the faculty of Columbia Law School in two thousand and seven. A Puerto Rican raised on the island, she writes about the constitutional history of American territorial expansion and the extraterritorial application of the United States Constitution, examining their implications for American federalism, citizenship, and nationhood. Professor Ponza Kraus is especially interested in the constitutional issues surrounding the political status of Puerto Rico and other U.S. territories and has written about these issues in the mainstream media as well in scholarly publications. She is the co-editor of Foreign in a Domestic Sense: Puerto Rico, American Expansion, and the Constitution: A Study of the United States Unfinished Colonial Experiment. Professor, thank you for being here with us this morning and you may begin your presentation at this time. Sign him off. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good morning and thank you, Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, for the invitation to speak today. As you mentioned, my name is Christina Ponza Kraus and I'm a professor at Columbia Law School and I study the constitutional history and law of American empire with a particular focus on Puerto Rico, which is where I'm from. I'm honored to be here today to discuss the insular cases and Resolution fifty-six thirty-six, supporting U.S. House Resolution two seventy-nine. My bottom line is that I agree with these resolutions. The insular cases are, to use Professor Sanford Levinson's words, which have been echoed in many ways at this hearing today, central documents in the history of American racism. The federal government should stop relying on them and ideally, the Supreme Court would overrule them. Congressman Underwood, Dr. Underwood, stated that beating up racism would not solve every problem and that there are problems that could and should be solved even with the insular cases in place and that there is much more to be done even if the insular cases are overruled. And all of this I agree with. But it is worth beating up the racism of the insular cases because as Dr. Underwood also said and Neil Weir echoed, these cases implanted into the DNA of the United States the idea that colonies are okay. And if the Congress is paying attention to the problem with that message, that's a good thing. It is important to recognize that the insular cases were rooted in racism and to demand that the United States reject them. I understand that the insular cases have their defenders and those defenses are qualified. Obviously and of course, their defenders do not condone the racist parts of the insular cases. Instead, as I understand their view, the defenders of the insular cases believe that it is possible to rescue these decisions from their racist past and put them to use for a good purpose, namely that of accommodating cultural practices in the U.S. territories that might be in tension with the U.S. Constitution. With all due respect to those views and to the rich and varied cultures of the U.S. territories, I disagree for three reasons. First, I disagree that it's possible to remove the racism from the insular cases. Second, I disagree that one needs them to accommodate most, maybe not all, but most of the cultural practices at issue. Third, I believe that even if there is anything of value to be salvaged from them, they still do more harm than good. As House Resolution two seventy-nine explains and we have heard today, the insular cases invented the doctrine of territorial incorporation, which distinguished between incorporated and unincorporated territories. There has been a great deal of scholarly debate about exactly what unincorporated means legally speaking. According to the standard account, the Constitution applies in full to incorporated territories but only in part to unincorporated territories. Although there is some truth to this description, in my own scholarship, I have argued that this understanding of the doctrine is overly simplistic and not entirely accurate. The difference between what parts of the Constitution apply to these different kinds of territories is not as great as the standard account suggests. However, what matters is this. The insular cases created two classes of territories for one purpose, to place unincorporated territories in a subordinate position and to make it possible for them to stay that way indefinitely. That is what the doctrine was for and the reason behind it was racism. The insular cases were explicit about it, referring to the people of the territories as alien races and reasoning that the inhabitants of the territories were incapable of governing themselves and must therefore be governed according to Anglo-Saxon principles, so-called Anglo-Saxon principles. The relationship between racism and the doctrine of territorial incorporation is not a coincidence. Incorporated territories were on a path to statehood and unincorporated territories were not. The result for the latter could be independence, as it was for the Philippines, but it could also be effectively indefinite colonialism, permanent colonialism, as it has been for the current territories. The Supreme Court invented the doctrine to make sure the United States would never have to grant constitutional equality or equal representation to the territories. It gave constitutional endorsement to colonialism not as a temporary stage on the way to statehood, as territorial status had always been, but as a status that could last indefinitely, which is what territorial status has become. The doctrine served this purpose then and whatever else one can say about it, it serves this purpose today. As noted earlier, these days there are courts and scholars who in no way endorse racism but who nevertheless argue that the doctrine of territorial incorporation can serve the valuable purpose of accommodating cultural practices that might be in tension with the U.S. Constitution. But I'm not sure these cases are necessary for this. Consider the debate over, just one debate among numerous, the debate over whether the citizenship clause of the Fourteenth Amendment applies in American Samoa. Relying on the insular cases, the government of American Samoa has argued that the phrase "United States" as used in the citizenship clause does not include American Samoa. A federal appeals court in Washington, D.C., agreed with this proposition, though the same issue is currently on appeal in the Tenth Circuit. The government of American Samoa has argued against birthright citizenship on the ground that it might threaten certain cultural practices. But the cultural practices at issue have nothing to do with citizenship and this is what the insular cases allow. It's make it up as you go along. For example, they include land, these practices include land alienation restrictions with which you are familiar, intended to protect native land ownership, which are in tension with the equal protection clause. However, that clause protects persons generally, not citizens specifically. So if these restrictions do violate equal protection, it would not be because anyone is a citizen. Professor Puisanvi, as I earlier observed, that these land alienation rules would not likely survive strict scrutiny if they were evaluated under an ordinary equal protection framework. That may be right, but it may be wrong. I believe that instead of trying to rehabilitate the insular cases, scholars should apply their creative legal minds to developing arguments that certain cultural practices survive strict scrutiny. It may seem like a stretch from current perspectives, but it is less of a stretch than the doctrine of territorial incorporation itself and it is less of a stretch than the idea that the insular cases can be separated from their racist origins. Finally, if that's wrong, if there are cultural practices in the U.S. territories that cannot be accommodated without resort to the doctrine of territorial incorporation, my own view is that it is still not worth the cost of sustaining that doctrine. Even when it is cited in support of cultural accommodation, the doctrine still makes possible the subordination of unincorporated territories. It still constitutionalizes indefinite, that is, permanent colonialism. Professor Cox-Alomar rightly pointed out that the plenary power doctrine preceded the insular cases and that under it, the federal government has a great deal of flexibility and of course, even incorporated territories don't have representation in the federal government. But the contribution of the insular cases themselves to this framework was to create the idea and insert into constitutional law the idea that some places belonged in that subordinate status forever. That is the problem. The United States should find a way to accommodate cultural traditions that does not give endorsement to permanent colonialism. Thank you very much.
One dunkle Luna Sizos-Masi, Professor Ponza Kraus. Colleagues, next we have Attorney Rodney Jacob. Attorney Jacob is a partner at a law, a local law firm, Calvo Fisher Jacob. He served as the Guam bar president. He was also the lawyer representative from the District of Guam to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. Attorney Rodney, I will always appreciate your partnership and your attendance. Thank you so very much, Primo. You may begin your testimony at this time. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. Good morning, Speaker Taraki. Good morning, our senators and all of those who are watching us and hearing us today. I very much appreciate the opportunity to testify. This is an important issue. It's especially an important issue to our home here on Guam. I wanted to focus my testimony and you'll notice as I do, a part of it's prepared, but some of it is not prepared. I'm going to react a little bit to what we heard this morning because there were some really important and thoughtful points that were made to us all that I think temper and focus on how we look at these issues. But the thing I wanted to talk about today was something that Attorney General Camacho said, that the harm is not hypothetical. I'm going to focus on a concrete example involving our national program for supplemental security income, SSI, and the case that I brought here on Guam in the federal court with colleagues at the National Law Firm of Kirkland and Ellis. We brought the case in the District Court of Guam really to rectify a grave injustice to Katrina Schaller and her sister and brother-in-law, Kim, and Dr. John Feggerger, who are also Katrina's guardians. SSI, as you may know, is a program that provides financial assistance to low-income elderly, blind, or disabled Americans. They have to be the most vulnerable in our society. It supports millions of qualified Americans throughout the fifty states, the District of Columbia, and our brothers and sisters in the CNMI. Our legislature, the body in which our senators sit, found that should Congress extend SSI to Guam, some twenty-four thousand of our residents would be eligible for such benefits. Let me tell you a little bit about Katrina and her sister Leslie, her twin sister Leslie. They were born in Pennsylvania in nineteen seventy. They are Kim Feggerger's sisters, Dr. John Feggerger's sister-in-laws. Kim is their only family member. They both have myotonic dystrophy, which is debilitating and an incurable genetic disorder that causes long-term degeneration of muscle function. For most of her life, Katrina lived with her mom in Pennsylvania and there Katrina and Leslie applied for and were granted SSI benefits by the Social Security Administration. I'm going to call that the SSA. So if you hear me say SSA, that just means the Social Security Administration. But when mom died in two thousand and seven, Katrina had no other living family able to care for her other than Kim and her brother-in-law, Dr. John. Most of you know, they just live right up the hill in Santa Hanya. And Dr. Feggerger, as you know, was born and raised here. He attended FD and he went to the University of Guam. As again, you may know, he's got five amazing brothers and sisters that are part of a big family here. And John's a great doctor. He was a product of many high-profile residency programs and he could have had his choice of living anywhere in the mainland or in Hawaii, but he chose home. And he and Kim raised three beautiful kids here. Two are in college, one's a senior at FD, incoming senior. But that choice to come back home to Guam would mean many years later, they'd have to face this anguishing choice because of the discriminatory application of SSI to Guam. When they told the SSA official in Pennsylvania that Katrina was going to be relocating here to Guam, to Santa Hanya, to live with John and Kim, the official told them that the SSA would terminate Katrina's benefits if she moved because the residents of Guam are not eligible for SSI. We live outside of the United States for purposes of SSI. Imagine that. Katrina's medical needs require- Katrina's medical needs require her to live with the Feggergers. So Katrina came to Guam in late 2008. In January 2009, the SSA cut off her SSI benefits. And what's even more heartbreaking is the story concerning twin sister Leslie, who is in assisted living now in Pennsylvania on SSI. Katrina and Leslie talked to each other every day on FaceTime. They've not seen each other since 2008. The reunion of the sisters is what they dream about every day, if they can do that. However, since Guam's not part of the United States for SSI, Leslie will lose her benefits if she travels to Guam for more than 30 days. And she can't do that with her condition, which is the same condition as Katrina's, and it's progressing. So is this situation unfair? Yeah, of course it is. Is it wrong? Absolutely. Is it discriminatory? It is. We argued in the district court that it deprived Katrina of her equal-protection rights under the Constitution. And Chief Judge Tidencoe-Gatewood found that the U.S. application of SSI in Katrina's case indeed violated the Equal Protection Clause. In essence, the court found that the 60-mile stretch of ocean, the 90-minute plane ride to the CNMI couldn't be a basis of eligibility for this essential program intended to provide those with serious medical and financial needs provisions. And the United States fought us every step of the way on grounds of the insular case doctrine, saying it permitted what we described as the gross and unfair discrimination against Katrina. The United States, or the SSA, has appealed, and the case is pending in the Ninth Circuit, and it's been stayed pending the outcome of the Supreme Court's decision in the Vallejo-Medaral case, which is the case out of the First Circuit. Okay. I know we have to move on, because you've got a lot more to share, but I just want to say one thing. What the point is, you know, challenging the United States to correct a wrong, to correct an injustice, is a feat in and of itself. Everyone said we were going to lose, based on these cases. And we still might. But let me tell you, this is what it took. It took great people at Catholic Social Services to clue us in about the injustices of safety net programs as they apply to Guam and the territories. It took counseling from incredible people like Dr. Underwood and Attorney General Camacho and Julian Uggan and others, who taught us the politics and the law of this issue. It took a law firm, the largest law firm in the country, Kirkland and Ellis, with great lawyers Mike Williams and Susan Davies, to help fight it out, because this case had to be a sustainable fight against the United States. And it took Dr. Feggerger and Kim to have courage to stand up and have that fight amidst their busy lives and their families. And it took the guardianship court of Guam to say yes and authorize the lawsuit. And at the end of the day, it took two incredible women, Katrina and Leslie, who questioned whether they'll actually see the day where they see benefits. But the reason why they took it, they said to me, they said, they said two things that I'm grateful about. They said, "Rod, we pray for you every day and what you're doing for us. But we pray that what we're doing will help other people, help other people like us, and help other families." And all I wanted to say today was, the harm's not hypothetical. It's a big feat. But for us on Guam and the territories to actually do something that everybody thinks is, duh, this program ought to apply in the territories. It's a national program. It was hard. And it's a lot to ask that we in the territories fight it out in this way. Thank goodness we had the ability and the resources and the incredible women in Katrina and Leslie Schaller and their sister and brother-in-law, Kim and John Feggerger, to stand up and fight. I hope that the resolution passes. I agree with Dr. Underwood, who says, "Once we get past the racism issues, we got to know what to do." And Congress has plenary authority over these issues. And so we have to urge Congress to do what's right. And so I'm really particularly interested in the House Resolution 279, not just for what it says, but what its outcome is, where in its first point of resolution, it says that the House of Representatives, and I hope that this body locally will say, echo this, that all laws need to be applied equally in both the states and the territories. That's what our case is about. And I wanted to share that with you, because it's about us here at home, real people, real people that we know, and an issue that could really help our community. So thank you, and happy to take any questions.
Ondang Kaluna Sizus Massey, Attorney Rodney Jacobs, for your presentation here this morning. And I also want to extend to the panel members on this round, Ondang Kaluna Sizus Massey, thank you for your testimonies today. I, at this time, would like to open the floor for any questions that my colleagues may have. I will like also to welcome Senator Sabina Perez, who I saw was on the Zoom earlier. Thank you for coming. So I will yield again to my colleagues who are physically present here today. Senator Torres, any questions or comments to this panel at this time?
I just want to express my heartfelt appreciation to everyone who took the time to not only invest several hours this morning, but the many hours that it took to also produce the testimony and to submit it. I think what is very helpful to us is the inclusion of case law and law review articles that will, you know, help us have a better understanding of this rather complex issue. Complex in the sense that, you know, the effects of this resolution and what it will mean and what the next steps that must occur will be. I mean, it's always a greater picture that sometimes is debilitating to people in terms of, do we act because we're unclear of what the outcome is? Or do we just act on a fundamental need to act on such an egregious thing as the insular cases? But I just wanted to express my gratitude. There's certainly a lot of material for us to go through, and there are a lot of considerations that need to follow after this resolution, the House resolution. If it should be successful, and we certainly hope it will be. But it's always the next step forwards. And I'm just grateful that we're at a point in our history where we can make some inroads. Many of us are the product of the, our grandfathers and our fathers that were in that first Guam Congress, that were fighting for citizenship, that were, you know, fighting for later the Electoral Governors Act, many rights. You know, we are the product of that. And indeed, history is ours to continue, and progress is ours to see through for our people. So I just wanted to thank all of you for your invaluable contributions. I most sincerely appreciate it. Sizus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Frank Blas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, like the previous speaker, I also want to express my gratitude to all of those who took the time to be able to provide testimony. I was certainly very interested in listening to the different perspectives. But I also want to most especially thank in just, just in his presentation, you know, Attorney Jacobs, who helped to bring it to perspective that this, a lot of this comes down to survival and what it would mean for individuals. And so I appreciate his sharing, you know, what he is experiencing and what he's dealing with in the legal system. So with that, again, I appreciate, as was stated by Senator Torres, everybody who took the time, from thousands of miles away too, Madam Speaker. Madam Chair, I want to commend you for that coordination. And I know there's still other speakers. But continue to listen with interest and the different perspectives and the ideas of how to make this a stronger resolution to hopefully make stronger legislation in U.S. Congress. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will go to my Zoom Speaker, Therese. She's not there. Senator Joanne Brown. Any comments or questions at this time?
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I really don't have much more to add other than to, certainly, we appreciate the testimony that's been provided. You know, and again, this is outlined for all of us, you know, our history as a territory and the areas certainly where we have a tremendous inequity in our role in the American family. But I do appreciate the input, because I think a lot of testimony today has certainly brought to light what has been raised for many years, but also what we currently are experiencing now in our community. You know, being sort of a part of the American family, but in many areas of desired equity, we're not there yet. And certainly, I think we have an expectation of that if we're going to continue on this process. So thank you very much for all of you, especially those of you with extensive background. And I know for many, it's something that, you know, you have been working with and being very passionate about for many years. Certainly those of us from Guam who have lived through this, you know, we continue to see where that inequity. There's the wonderful part of being part of the U.S. family, and yet even under the structure of its government, we see where there are parts where we're not quite there. And in all fairness, that's something that we continue to aspire to. I mean, I myself am, you know, very much wanting to see Guam have a bigger part and a more engaged part with that, and more equitable part. So I certainly am supportive of this resolution. Again, thank you to everyone. I know it's taken a few hours, but certainly to those that also are off-island that have juggled their schedules to accommodate being a part of this hearing this morning. It's most appreciated. Thank you very much, Vice Speaker, for allowing me to comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. And I do see, Senator Sabina, do you have any comments or questions at this time?
Yes, thank you, Vice Speaker. And I really appreciate all the testimony that's been provided thus far. I do have a question for the panel in regards to how the insular cases have, I guess, influenced the implementation of environmental laws and whether they have any recommendations as far as addressing environmental racism. So I'll go ahead and jump in to be, but I will be very brief, because to be honest, I don't know of any specific relationship between the insular cases themselves and the implementation of environmental laws. So any differential treatment with respect to environmental laws would be rooted in territorial status itself as opposed to the insular cases, with the insular cases adding those components of indefineness to the situation. But I don't think that specifically they affect the implementation of the environmental laws unless one of my colleagues corrects me.
I would agree with that, Professor Ponza Kraus. But I would add that I think that your point about the insular cases as a doctrine of subordination is an important one to this and really many other questions that residents of Guam face. And so, you know, things like environmental contamination, things like, you know, longstanding, you know, military toxic waste, where time and time again, the people of Guam find themselves, you know, including very recently at the U.S. Supreme Court with Attorney General Camacho's case being treated in this subordinate manner that, you know, well, you know, this bad stuff happened to people far away who don't have political power and who the Supreme Court have, you know, classified in this subordinate manner. So why should, why should we care? Why should we treat them the same as we would treat other communities throughout the country? And so I think there really are a lot of ways that the insular cases, as Attorney General Camacho said, you know, have, the harm is not hypothetical. There are tangible kitchen-table issues that this all relates to. And I think that you're right to raise those concerns.
Senator Perez, this reminds me of the CJMT and the NMI. And I just remember the environmental justice analysis. Environmental justice requires looking at whether or not there's a disparate impact on racial minorities. And the analysis was, well, because everyone in the NMI is a minority, there's no disparate impact on them. So it didn't really, you know, environmental justice as it's applied is going to always be a little bit of a wrinkle. But just proximity and the way geographically we're an island, there's always going to be environmental justice issues. And it doesn't really touch on the insular cases. It's just broader concerns about justice and why you can put certain things out in the Pacific without having to deal with folks who have more federal representation.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Vice Speaker.
Sizus Massey, Senator Perez. Senator Ada?
Nothing at this time, Madam Vice Speaker. Thank you.
I have one question. This seems like a long roadmap to achieve equality. And from a legal perspective, how would you see different steps that need to be taken? And what is your roadmap? Any one of you, any one of the one on this panel at this time?
Happy to start off there. Or Rodney, do you want to go ahead?
No, go ahead, Neil. I'll follow.
Sure. Yeah, I think one thing that's important to understand about the insular cases is the role they've had in limiting the scope of political possibilities for residents of Guam and the other territories, much in the same way, I believe, that Plessy versus Ferguson served as a case that subordinated African-Americans within the United States that limited the scope of political possibility for those communities. And much as you really can't imagine things like the Civil Rights Acts of the 1960s, the Voting Rights Acts of the 1960s ever happening to provide equality and expand voting rights for African-Americans without the Supreme Court first overruling Plessy versus Ferguson. So too, I think, that a lot of these kind of incremental progress steps that, you know, Dr. Underwood talked about, SSI benefits, Medicaid benefits, you know, perhaps voting rights or other issues, really takes a kind of uprooting, root and branch this constitutional framework and doctrine that has justified this continued subordination and has justified, you know, licensed this colonial status. So while I think all the speakers are correct that, you know, is, you know, that certainly overruling the insular cases isn't enough to bring about the changes that people in Guam want to see, that it may well be necessary towards achieving those changes by creating the same kind of political space and political pressure that Brown v. Board overruling Plessy versus Ferguson did for African-American communities. You look to other communities, like the LGBT community, the Obergefell decision recognizing marriage equality, and how that really has dramatically opened up the political possibilities for members of that community and state legislatures in Congress. And so while this is certainly just a first step and one that's not anywhere near sufficient, I think that I really appreciate the Senator's support for Congress's efforts to try to make good on some of the failed, the, the harmful legacy of racism that the insular cases really just powerfully represent.
Anybody else?
I was just going to jump in here as well. I, you know, given the fact that, you know, we've litigated, and I explained to you the really enormous effort it took to get to the point where we did to get a favorable decision at the trial court, there's still a lot of rocky road ahead of us. I mean, we have the Ninth Circuit and then potentially the decision out of the U.S. Supreme Court out of the First Circuit, which will, we all think will certainly be, certainly influence the decision as to whether to uphold or reverse Katrina Schaller's case. But I, I think the answer to your question, Madam Vice Speaker, is we got to keep fighting. We have to keep doing, in particular, what we're doing now. We have to say this is wrong. We have to articulate the reasons. It makes lawyers' jobs really difficult in the area. Let me give you a, a concrete example of that. The reason why most lawyers and, and, and legal strategists around our case liked the Schaller twin case was because it didn't potentially give the courts an out. What do I mean by that? Leslie and Katrina Schaller have the same degenerative disease. They can't go to a brother or sister in Arizona or Vermont or a relative in Florida and continue their benefits. The only place they can go is here, to Senahania, where their sister can care for them and Dr. Fergurger, their brother-in-law, can care for them. They can only come to Guam, and the consequence is SSI benefits are cut out. Now, what does that mean? That's a fact, as cold as this sounds, that is a fact pattern that the courts cannot ignore. And if they do ignore, frankly, we call it an injustice. I see this as a civil rights movement. Here in the Territories, can't vote in the National Congress or the national elections, period. It's like the Caroline Products case. We are outside of the political process because we can't influence by vote, we don't consent by vote to laws that apply to us. The SSI case is one of them. And one thing Dr. Underwood taught me was the Congress can discriminate in your favor. Some examples are in the CNI. The Congress can also discriminate against you. We gave an example about Guam. I personally believe it's wrong what happened in the SSI case. We had to take it to court. Many people in Congress voiced the problem. Everybody I talked to says it's wrong, but we had to go to a court. And let me complicate that more. The, the judge we have here is courageous because she is a political, in some sense, a political appointee. She has a 10-year term. We don't have a life-tenured federal judge to stand up to the United States in the political process. So imagine all of the obstacles we had to overcome to get to a decision that was by everybody's account the right thing to do. Give someone that was qualified for SSI in Pennsylvania, SSI in Senahania, because she couldn't live anywhere else without her loving sister unless, God forbid, she had to live with a third party or be a ward of the state of Pennsylvania. It's just not how this country's ideals are, are, work. We're not, we're not founded on principles like that. And God knows our island isn't either. It's why we're the most beautiful, just wonderful jurisdiction in the world, in, in the country. And we just need to keep fighting. So my answer is, let's just keep doing what we're doing. It doesn't feel like enough, but it's what we can do today, and we have to change the structure. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney Jacobs. If there's no one else on the panel.
I could say, just a couple of sentences.
Professor Newman, your, your recognition. Please.
Thank you. I'm only a legal scholar, and I just want to say, you need both law and politics. The courts won't give you what you want unless the political movement is created, makes the courts feel empowered to give you what you want. Depending on what you want, it may be something that Congress can give you, or it may be something that Congress can only give you with the help of the court agreeing that Congress can really give you, Congress wants to give you. So there's, there's a long road, and both law and politics are needed.
Madam Chair, I'd like to be recognized.
Yes, before I do that, Senator Duñez, thank you. I, I apologize, I did not see Speaker Therese or Minority Leader on the last Zoom up. So at this time, I will go ahead and acknowledge Speaker Therese for her question to this panel, and then Senator Duñez for his question to this panel before I release them. Speaker Terla, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Speaker. I, I really want to thank the panel, these professors and distinguished attorneys who have actually, yeah, done the work to, to get these issues very much more known by the American community, by the people of Guam, and, and increase our understanding. And I thank you for your recognition of, that it takes all, all of us and all different aspects, political, legal, different community grassroots work, to really help to educate and to get the people of Guam to determine for themselves what is their next step forward. And, and really, I, and for recognizing that with all of this, with, you know, recognizing racism in the courts, past decisions, and recognizing, you know, by Congress Act, pointing that out, that we expect, of course, additional action by Congress. I think those who pointed that out earlier, that there is additional action by Congress that can be made, and that we expect, you know, of course, that our right to self-determination is, is really foremost in this process. And that's really, I want to, want to ensure that we do not overlook, that we do not impede is, is that in, in any of our efforts. And so, but I do want to thank you all, and Professor Newman, I hear you about the political and the legal, and all of you, I thank you for your work. So thank you, Madam, Madam Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for your comments. Minority Leader, Senator Duñez, you are acknowledged for a question or comment to this panel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have two questions that I'll direct, but I also want to thank this distinguished panel for the information they've provided today. Seems like what we've covered has been racism, militarization, self-determination. And I wanted to thank, you know, Attorney Jacob for, for really adding that, that, that fundamental issue of SSI and, and the decisions of SSA and his fight in terms of the, the equality and equality issues of federal programs. I wanted to go back to Professor Newman really quickly, and, and, and I thank you for your, your, your legal analysis and kind of, you know, your structured approach. So once again, I think this was discussed by, by our speaker, it seems that the, I, I seem to think your comments lead to maybe a political status resolution would probably be the fastest path outside of when the insular cases, of course, are deemed to be inequitable. Would, would that be your observation, Professor Newman?
Thank you. I'm afraid I don't know what is, what is the fastest doing it. I'm not, I don't have enough local knowledge to know what is, what is feasible in the short term within Guam. I do want to say I am pessimistic about progressive decisions from the Supreme Court on territorial issues in the short term. I, I, I can imagine a path to progressive decisions, but I have difficulty imagining it succeeding in the next few years.
Thank you, Professor. And, and that was going to lead to a question to our Attorney General, leaving Camacho. In light of the professor's observations, obviously, this is really the key sticking point, I think, Attorney General, for our current discussion on Guam and as represented by the, you know, the decolonization representative today too, as well. I, I think that the struggle at this point would be to, if we wanted to in any way with alacrity, move towards self-determination and come up with our decision, it seems like we're, we're, we're stuck in this choral self-determination quandary. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I'm not sure if Dr. Underwood's on, but he, he gave me quite a ribbing when I said, you have to start with what the goal of a plebiscite would be, if you're talking specifically about the plebiscite. And if the purpose of the plebiscite is to decolonize, the question would be, then who is colonized? Who counts as colonized? And that, that's a, that's a policy choice that needs to be made by, by the legislature. If the purpose of the plebiscite is to just, what is the temperature of the people of Guam, then you would obviously have a different category of folks who would be both eligible to vote and how it would be processed. So it starts fundamentally with what is the goal? What is the policy reason behind conducting a plebiscite? And then where you go legally from there, it becomes a lot more straightforward.
So Madam Chair, I, I close with this observation simply because it seems to me there would be no need for many amendments to this resolution, if really what it was dealing with was the racist aspect and the, in the, in, in, that exists within the insular cases, and that all we have to work on that we've talked about today with the issues of militarization, with issues of self-determination, with issues of discriminatory processes when it comes to inclusion in federal programs. Then we've got to put that on the front burner if that, if this is the start of that conversation, simply because we haven't even determined yet how we're going to vote or what that vote would mean to remedy these issues. Because clearly, clearly, our status is what controls what we're able to do. And so I just wanted to make sure that I put those thoughts and, and, and in motion on the record. Sizusmaasi, Madam Chair, and once again, thank you to the panel.
Thank you very much, Minority Leader, and to this panel. Before I dismiss you, I want to share with you that I, I will definitely draft the recommendations in the committee report and amend the resolution. I appreciate your input and assistance to make this resolution better. If there are no further questions to this panel, once again, thank you for all your time, and I truly appreciate your time today and for your insights on what the insular cases are, its implications on the, on the people of Guam, and our fellow Americans in this, in the Territories. So Undangaluna Sizusmaasi and Sizusmbine DC Hamzoo. Colleagues, to those that are still on and to the listening audience, I want to note that we are moving into our panel three. I will note that they are, there are a couple of, of folks who still want to testify. And I was asked by audio on the team just to give us five minutes so that they can reboot the audio so that we can get back on for the whole island of Guam, here and all those listening from elsewhere. So if you can just indulge me, five minutes before we take the next panel. Sizusmaasi.